I call this board meeting to order. All board members are present. And student representative Emily is present as well. First up, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lisa, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in here who can say aye. Aye, opposed, the agenda is approved. First, on strategic initiatives. The first item is secondary principal update. And this is a standard, you know, newly instituted standard where we, during the course of the year, we like to hear from the principals at both elementary and secondary levels. We ask that you attend the work session. It just allows us for greater interaction between us and yourselves. And just have a better understanding of what's going on in your buildings. And so we have the privilege to have Mark Jensen, old high school, middle school peer this year.
Jake Nelson, too.
You want me to come through with that?
Yeah, sure.
Alright.
Just don't step by me. I don't know if you're here, but we had 22 people go home today until they're out of our building. Twenty of them threw up in the nurses' office. So we are looking at probably, well, two influenza.
Oh.
Yeah. What time of year? I saw the news it's really bad this year.
Yeah. So is that why you're sitting back?
Yeah, he doesn't feel well, so.
Oh, are you serious? Why did you come on? Perfect attendance awarded?
Well, that's what we don't want. Influenza is...
And if you want to rule us, we're forced at that time, too. We're too busy. Do your other thing.
Sounds good.
Do that.
Yep, yeah, start with your stuff.
Actually, well, there's a panel from Mark into the world's best workforce then into here. Okay. Real quick, we are just getting started with registration. So what that looks like is organizing our classes. This is 612. And so here's the, at this time, we start looking at dropping, you know, okay, this class isn't really running that well, let's get rid of it, let's see if we can add something here. I think at the middle school, we are going to drop, was it journalism and add creative writing, just because of the numbers. And at the high school, there was a request, there's a couple requests. One is for English to do a requirement if a student fails. Don't have a lot of legs on this one, but that they have to come back and they're basically forced to take this other class. And so there's a lot of issues with that one. That we're still trying to wrestle through, so I don't know if that one will end up making it in the book. Then the social studies, they are looking at adding another one. Overall, though, the process works where we get it all kind of organized. Bring it out, we kind of sell it out to the kids in January, and then February they register. This is why this all plays into the budget piece. I know Scott today kind of walked us through kind of the ballpark number there, what we're looking for in terms of staffing, this is what we use, so that's huge. We've never had that, so thank you. Or thank you, whoever that's doing that. And so that will then start playing. We are gonna be looking at a mess at the middle school again. We are up quite a few kids, just the way it looks. High school, it shows we're kind of down, but we've already had several requests from counselors, or to visit counselors from out of district. So we have a lot more open enrollment still coming. We don't know those numbers, obviously those fluctuate all over the place, but we haven't really lost a lot of kids that have come from the high school, so that's been good. So we'll see. So all of that kind of rolls into February. I come back, and then in February, I think there's mine when my report is in terms of how this all plays out, what we're looking at in terms of staffing, what I think we're gonna need, and so on, and then you guys can kind of play with that and see. I think what we're gonna probably be looking at more so is at the middle school this year for next year. We made some different decisions in regards to our RTI and our intervention piece. We kind of went with a math core slice, it's sort of like our reading core, it's a person that comes in. What we had hoped to get from that position was it was two...
You were rewarded 1.75.
1.75, so almost two people coming in, and we only got the 1.75. And looking at it more closely, you can only work with certain kids, so yeah, we're really struggling with our math in that respect of getting those interventions out to those kids. So we're probably gonna drop that, and actually we have to go back to what we did a year before. We were trying to save money by going this route, we did this through a grant. So we cut our math teacher intervention last year and added this math core piece, but the math core piece isn't really working out for us, so we're gonna have to kind of, I think we're leaning towards digitant or if we can add it, we'll see. So yeah, that takes us roughly to where we're at right now. Mostly, things are going well in the building. We've got some things, I don't know if you've had a chance to check out the stairway, we've added some new graffiti out there. Kind of nice, I saw it on Twitter, nonetheless, from another school, and so, hey, it's really cool. And so we've been working on putting that. We're still working on street signs for the buildings. It's become a much more bigger job than Dee thought at first when I delegated her to do it. What we did, and I don't know if I've said anything since, but what we did, it was in one of my reports, I think, but our sixth grade Minnesota Studies class, they did Cold Spring Richmond-Rockville history, and we came up with street signs. What we're gonna do is we're gonna mark the whole building with street signs. So like, you're gonna be out on Springer Avenue, okay, so you're gonna follow this, and so hopefully easier for navigation through the building, and so those street signs will be all up on the corners and stuff, and so people can hopefully kind of get a better way than saying D124, you know, D124, or you're in the B wing, or you're in the D wing. A lot of people struggle with that. You know, you can go down Main Street, take a right at Springer Avenue, and it'll be right there on your left. Hopefully, we'll see. But we're finding out there's a lot of little hallway spaces and stuff that need signs. But our sixth grade Minnesota Study kids came up with the list of names, so they're kind of cool, you know. And so those are kind of getting into works. What else do we have going on? Other than that, I think. Our new students have adapted very well. The open enrollment, I know there's a general rumor mill sometimes that gets cranked up around here, but it has internally in the building, it's gone very, very well. It's been a very nice transition. And I think that has, I'm pleasantly surprised, I mean, how things are going in that case. So I think our open enrollment students are feeling very welcomed here, just good.
How was the bad, I think, when I tried, I came in like, one day twice, and my bad thing was still causing some issues there. Because I'd have to, you'd sit there and wait for like, a couple minutes to get that little thing, and then I would print, and I wouldn't print, and...
Yeah, it's kind of hit me, I think they got off Ryan's side to you at all, I think it's the printer issue, so they swapped out the printer. But I know that he's been there quite a bit lately, so I don't know what, it has not gone well. When it works, it's awesome.
Yeah.
But when it doesn't work, it's kind of...
I certainly have a whole camera.
Yeah.
Technically, though, you couldn't, you have two ready.
Yeah, I might come in after, then maybe do it.
Do you not have a name? I do not have a, okay. Should I talk about, let's talk about this.
I'm only works at this part.
Right, but, yeah, we'll talk about it.
Oh.
I should have, I should have, I don't have any, and my, he probably does not work. Well, I'll talk to you guys on my, it's when I decide I don't have it.
Well, it's supposed to be a complete, yes, I have, so it's, I don't have it.
Mark, is there anything else you want to know about us?
Um, yeah, right. Couple other things, at the high school, we've been having, several, we just had Mr. Gutter and I, it's part of Mr. Gutter's actually professional goal this year, so it's nice that he's kind of taking the lead on it, but working with Cold Spring and St. Cloud Tech College, creating an apprenticeship program. The Tech College actually has one that they can work and they get college credits, and so they spend time at Cold Spring, working there for the day, or half a day, or however we do it. We run work experience already here, but this is a little bit different. Work experience is very structured in terms of what kids can and can't do during the school day. The apprenticeship program is a little bit different. I know Cold Spring's been after and really interested in it. The issue is they're a little nervous with the 17-year-old age, and so with insurance and stuff like that. And so they're, I know Scott went back to the company, and they're kind of trying to work out some ways that we can make this work for next year, so hopefully.
Actually, doesn't using an approved apprentice program give you more flexibility on the insurance issue, I thought?
I think that's what, oh gosh, I can't even think of anything, no. I think that's what the St. Cloud Tech, I was saying.
Yeah, bakery association had looked into that at one point, and I thought that by having an approved apprenticeship program, then you could have 16 and 17-year-olds working in places you couldn't outside of that.
Yeah, and I think that's what he told, we'll see. So they're working on it. We're kind of excited for it, it's good for us. The other thing is, is, I know we have a couple issues with our college and the high school's teachers not necessarily being licensed in that specific field. The Board of Higher Education has made these new requirements where if you're gonna teach science, you can't just have a master's, which is what was the criteria before, as long as you had a master's, you could teach it. Now you need a master's in specifically that field, or that area. Now, if you don't have that, you can get 18 credits, is what it's called, and then 18 credits in that area, and then you will be qualified. We got really nervous at first because we have a lot of teachers, but actually it only impacts about four of our staff. What's nice is that the Bentstones Co-op, there's another one in, where do we just sign, Southern Minnesota, I think, is great, it's called 18 Online. They will be paying for the college credits for these staff members, and they will get those 18 credits online. So we have a couple people already started doing that. They have a couple years to get this done, but it's a grant or a stipend, they get approved, so they're actually gonna lane change out of the deal for free, which is nice, but hopefully by then we'll have everybody covered. Which is nice.
I just have a couple of pitches for the middle school. Tomorrow we have our annual curfew treat over at the DEF, it's an holiday, I think they head over there about 15:00 in the morning, and we'll be coming back probably about 2:30-ish. So that's put on by Youth Frontiers, and it's the curfew treat. The other thing is, is in the past, and I go off what Mark said about registration, in the past, we've had a specific evening with parents, with our current sixth and seventh graders, to talk to them about the upcoming registration update place. Instead of having a separate night for that, we're gonna do that during our conferences, so it'll hopefully reduce the number of times the parents have to come in. So we're gonna actually have two meetings, one at 5:00, one at 7:00, whatever is more convenient for the parent to come in and present the registration information, that'll then be going out to the students within the next week or so.
Does that work for kinds of kids coming in from St. Cloud, this, this...
We're gonna have another meeting in, probably mid-March, I think it's right around March 18th, somewhere around there. But we're gonna have a registration night for any new family and all of our fifth graders. So our current fifth grader's going into sixth grade, and then any new family, which would be those that are from our parochial schools, or possibly that they already know at this point they're gonna be open for next year, that would be that kind of where they would come in. So this one during conferences is specifically for our current sixth and seventh graders that are attending here. The other one in March will be for all of those other new students and current fifth graders coming in.
So not necessarily new families, but new students? So like, when my middle one is ready to come in, we're not a new family to the district, but she would be a new student to the...
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'm gonna add to all that. Also, this spring, we are doing a day with fifth grade. Kind of what you were talking about earlier is how do we get that transition piece? We're inviting the fifth graders and sixth graders in for the day. They get the shadow classes, they get to visit with Student Senate members, but you know, eighth grade people, what I wish I knew, starting in middle school, this is what I do, get their locker, they get to have lunch here, and I do it in smaller groups, and walk them through that, so kind of give them a day here in the spring, kind of ease some of the anxiety as to what this whole thing will look like for them.
And that'll extend to the fifth and, and the sixth graders.
That was sixth group, yeah.
So you did invite the sixth grade.
Why not anybody yet, Mr. Humphrey?
Well, I'm just saying, I just, I do have a guy at sixth grade at St. Cloud, so you would invite him.
So anybody new coming in, like, that will be there for sure in sixth or seventh grade, you know, so yes, the sixth grader's included.
And Peter Palmer, sure.
They're really good at fifth.
So they'll be, yeah.
So fifth graders at all of our locations are invited.
Yep, yep. They'll probably come, it's probably about a two or three day, we're still working on the schedule and what that will look like. But yeah.
Going back to that parent meeting, will you have interpreters available, or be able to promote that for families that might need it?
Yes. Both of them.
Awesome. Thank you.
For conferences, it'll be, right, a little bit easier, it'll be, because we're gonna have our interpreters here for conferences, so we can pull one of those in for that, or we'll have to coordinate that for the one in March.
Yeah, it would just be nice to be able to communicate that with families ahead of time, so they don't stay back from a meeting because they think that's not available.
Yep, and it's gonna be in our newsletters, starting this, it was in, I don't know if it was in last Friday's, but it'll be going in the newsletters from this point until happens, is our first.
How do you do that? Translate on something? You mirror, you mirror the speaker, it just usually takes, having as much time, yeah.
Say something, wait, you can translate, say something.
If you're the one, you interpret it, it's very good, probably, until you get the voting on it, but yeah.
Actually, we use systems out there where you can edit and type comments, but it comes in.
That's all I got, that's all you got.
The only question that I have, and we can talk about it, is just cellphone usage in the classrooms from the students. And again, having a son in ninth and 10th grade, there was some, you know, incidents this year where kids have got caught up in cheating and different things, whether it was using the phone, or taking a picture, or texting information. So my question is, you know, it's in our handbook, do we have a guideline to give new teachers and say, here's some things that our veteran teachers, because, you know, it's not hard, I can ask my kids, which teachers do good, which teachers don't? And there's a handful here and a handful there, and I ask them, well, how do the teachers do that, do the job best? And there's, you know, three or four different strategies that those teachers use. Is there any way to help make sure that we get them all on the same page? Because I think it's really hard.
I don't know if we're ever gonna, I hope we're ever on the same page.
Well, but I mean, it is a rule, though, and it is a policy that we have.
But it also is, if you have COO, I don't know if you've heard of COO, it is a test, like a online quiz that they take, you know, watching.
But that's not what we're talking about.
But they're using cellphones for it.
Right, but that, and that's, but that's, and those are, that's applicable at times. What I'm seeing is, in the situation when you have a student taking a test that has to be afraid that another kid's gonna take a picture of his test, that's not okay. The kid shouldn't have to be afraid that someone's gonna take a picture and then pass it to the...
But what I'm gonna go back to is, what is the issue? Is the issue the cellphone, or is the issue that there's cheating, you know?
Without the fruit.
Because cheating around, sorry, chemistry crypt cheat I had right here in my head.
Anyway, but what I'm saying is, if there's a way to come into the room, because teachers, I'm assuming, they put it in a basket, some ask their kids when they take tests to put it in the back of the room. But for us to say, because we use it occasionally, we're gonna allow the kids to have it and put that forbidden fruit right there, and give them a chance during the test, when they're not supposed to use it.
I don't, we've talked about it, we've talked about it at staff meetings.
But it is in our handbook, it's a policy, right?
It shouldn't be hard to have the expectation that all teachers either collect the phones when it's test time, or require them to be in the back of the room, or whatever. That shouldn't be a hard expectation to set with the teachers for specific things. If there's a test happening, then...
Let me ask you this, do you best sit with your students when they're doing homework at home?
Do I sit with my child?
Do you sit with your child when they're doing homework?
My child doesn't, I have her at home. She's at home at school. Maybe do it right in the kitchen, on the counter, or around the...
Sure, because I can guarantee you at some point here, as they're going through school, you're gonna snap that, and you're gonna send it. So do we tell the parents that you put the phone away as well? It's my parent's responsibility, you're...
Good guaranteeing, it's hard to be a good parent.
Right.
We pay the teachers to be the best teachers they can be.
Right.
So end the discussion on that. We pay them to do the best job they can. And to just say, because a kid's doing it at home, if we have the ability to say, some teachers ask the kids to put it in the back of the room, why can't we say the expectation is, you know what, teachers, this is what you need to do? Done.
Okay.
Well, I'm just asking the question.
Well, I think it's easier said than done.
Well, that means that teachers are blatantly not following expectation of what the guidelines are. And again, I, it's unfair to the teachers that are trying to follow the rule, because then they have to read, you know, then they gotta fight this enigma of...
But it's also, okay, but fighting the rule of what, having a cellphone in the room?
No, 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 no.
Or having a cellphone, because there's no rule that says you have a cellphone in the test, it's, it's either you're using it for the classroom...
What I'm saying is that there are teachers that have many different ways of going about this, that implement a strategy to keep that phone away from kids that are definitely afraid of a grade they're gonna get, and they pushes them over the edge. Without the ability to take a picture, without the ability to use their phone, it takes one less potential away from them from cheating. Doesn't mean they're not gonna cheat, doesn't mean they're not gonna cheat at home, doesn't mean they're gonna cheat everywhere. But we've done our job here. So if there are teachers that are able to say, okay, students, it's test day, you need to all put your cellphones in the back of the room, that is not hard to do. And if we're saying that we can't ask our teachers to do that because they're not gonna follow that, I...
I don't think I ever, I don't think I ever said that. I don't think I ever said that the teachers aren't gonna follow that. What I'm saying is, you're asking for something that is much bigger than you realize. And I, by all means, to be concerned, I'll make the directive tomorrow, that from now on, anytime a test is taken, you put the phone somewhere else.
What do they do in the ALC? What do they do in the ALC?
They have a phone booth, or whatever they put their phones in. I offered to buy, I offered to buy every teacher a thing, you know how many people took me up on it? Two.
I'm saying right now, that it's not, I don't think it should be an option. If you don't need your phone for instructional studies, why would we give the kid that opportunity to distract other kids, number one? Because if you're gonna cheat, you're gonna cheat.
Lisa, you're making...
Yep, I say, can I say something? This sounds like an issue that I don't know where we're at as a board level, and I'd either like to be filled in, so I know exactly what's going on.
Okay, but this is a work session, so this is exactly the time...
This is where, this is why we're supposed to have this.
Right, so what I'm trying to say is, could I either be filled in, otherwise, I don't know if we're talking about cellphone use policy at a board level?
No, we had a situation where a student, actually a teacher's son was involved in terms of taking pictures, and then they would send it, so they had a test second hour, take a picture of the test, and the fourth hour students would have it, and then they would cheat after that.
Okay.
So that's where this started.
Okay, thank you.
So be clear for me, it's not, you're absolutely, you're never, you know, you can't, you're not gonna take it away from them because it's just the way the world is. All I'm asking is that if you're not using that phone for a test or a quiz, let's take the temptation away from the kids. And if we can buy hanging, I mean, that's an awesome idea. They all get a number, and it sounds like you use it at the ALC, they put it in there, and you can take attendance away, because I'll be there, there'll be kids out at home.
Like I said, I offered to buy everybody one.
Well, what I'm saying, so you offer to buy, and they say, no. I'm curious, the teacher's saying, no, we don't wanna have a better strategy, or...
Well, I don't know if that's, I don't know, maybe they have some other strategy that they're using, I don't know. You know, I just...
Yeah, I think it is a little bit, I think it's a really good conversation. Cheating, that's something that...
I think it's also the other things you're gonna run into is parents, because that's where we hear it probably the most. Why can't you get ahold of Little Bobby?
No, pop campus, pop campus and the app can get ahold of Little Bobby.
But you're offline there, because we're only talking about when they don't need to use the phone.
I am, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I know, but I'm just saying, there is no way, I can't imagine a parent looking at me and saying, I want my kid to have his phone on him when he doesn't need it for a test.
It happens all, it happens all the time, I'm not kidding. It's private property, it's personal property, you can't take my kid's...
So the teachers that have to put the phone in the back of the room, not all the kids follow that rule?
I don't, I have no idea, maybe. Some people say I don't have a phone.
Wait a minute, we can have, we can, we can have rules in place, but say, to take this test, you cannot have a phone on you. If you aren't going to relinquish your property for this test, then you can't take the test, and you're gonna get nothing. And you're gonna fail. And that's a choice that you, student, and you, parent, have to make. But, I mean, I get so irritated with the fear of what a parent might say, because we don't want kids being distracted by their devices. I mean, my seventh grader is appalled by how many kids are on their phones disrespecting their teachers, not paying attention to what's going on in class, because they can, because the teachers don't say anything about it. Teachers allow it to happen. We allow it to happen in seventh, eighth, ninth through 12th grade, that's where you have it at work, you got people in meetings distracted by their phones, if we're allowing a behavior that is a really poor point of behavior. And we're sitting here saying, well, parents won't let it happen, oh, we can't take their phones away, oh, that's gonna be too hard, teachers won't do it, that's ridiculous. This is our job, to make sure that our kids are experiencing the best learning opportunity that they can, and that we're removing distractions like this from the classroom, and we should be taking every effort to do that, not sitting here making...
And I would second, it's not the cheating, all kids maybe are gonna, or make those mistakes. I'm more concerned about the kids that are being distracted continually, because we don't give them the environment that they need to learn. You know, and again, is it partly our fault for not trying to find ways to limit that? And truly, if you have all these parents calling saying that it is not okay to ask them to remove their phone, or put it, not remove it, put it in the back of the room while they're taking a test where they don't need it, I'd like to see those people, because I can't imagine that they would sit here and say that, no, my son has to have his phone on him when he's taking a test when he doesn't need his phone. I don't know that they have, what basis do they have? I mean, we're not taking it away from them.
Yeah, I tell them all the time, not keeping it.
Anyway, I agree, there's bigger discussion here, but we have to try to help, and I see you shaking your head, we have to try to help the students that want an equal playing field, and we have to try to help the teachers that are trying to make it a playing field. We can't just give up and say, you know, parents are making these mistakes, or we have teachers that just won't follow it, they're just, they want their own deal, and they feel like, I don't know.
It is a bigger discussion, but if we don't start the discussion now, when are we gonna do it? Because I think it is a discussion that has to happen. I think we need to, as a district, decide what are we gonna allow in the classroom and what aren't. I mean, Emily, what's your experience with...
Lots of teachers actually do have something for tests. I have teachers who use file cabinets, and you cannot leave the classroom or get your phone back until the test is turned in. Teachers have baskets, tables in the front or the back of the room, but you always have those students that just hide it in their shoe or their pockets, say, I don't have it. Occasionally, you'll get one that says, no, I'm just not giving you my phones, it's my right to keep it, my property. They get sent to the office, but there's always cheating, it's hard to prevent it, but there are teachers that really try, like Mr. Warren, he won't let you have a phone in his classroom, but lots of students keep it, and when his back is turned, they're on it, but what do you do?
So there's a lot of variation in the building, I was gonna say. I mean, I think the thing that I'm struggling with, is I'm listening to this conversation, I think it's a good conversation, and there's obviously a lot of passion for it. My concern is how do we roll this up into a board discussion? And so I think, you know...
I'd like to know how you could come out of your technology discussion. You know, do we want a one-to-one building, do we want kids having access to some of these things, or not?
Again, this is not, I mean, we're going drastic, I know, we're going drastic here. All we're talking about is, it sounds like some of the teachers are doing these things. I asked the question, is there a strategy we can give young teachers to help them? Because I know, because I've talked to my kids, and I hear what she's saying, there are teachers in your building that are doing heck of a job, and they set expectations, and guess what? Kids follow. There's always any kids that don't, but those kids get caught once in a while.
I was going out that this was a bigger conversation. I mean, I think that was the consensus here, right? Saying that would be a good place, would be the technology committee to have it.
But I don't want it, I don't want it to be drastic. I don't want this to be something where you're saying we can't have technology in our classroom. I mean, that was.
I didn't, I didn't.
I don't know that technology is the right place to talk about it because it's about, it's about how, how we allow access to devices.
And in order, when.
And when.
I mean.
So policy?
I would say policy before technology.
I even had something to go off what Mark said is I had a parent on credit who was in with her kid and I asked to see the phone. The parent refused for her son to hand me the phone. She said, "This is not yours, you are not getting it, he is gonna keep it on him."
That's where we have.
If that's the message going to the student, then that goes back to another classroom and the kid is not going to give it up.
Well, I'm guessing it wasn't criminal that he, I mean, obviously there are reasons why you would need to take that phone and if it was, then you probably needed to go to the next.
Well, then you have to, you have to get, right, so the way. But I think if we have policies in place that say, "Here's when you can and when you can't" and if a kid then doesn't relinquish their phone when they can't have it, then they're violating policy and then you deal with it as a, as a policy violation.
As a way.
It gives, I think it gives teachers more.
Something to stand on.
Yes.
I would be curious to go back and read that policy.
Yeah, I, I wanna do that too.
So I took this down in notes and talked to Scott about it and see where the proper venue is. But I do think it's.
We don't have this policy, can't look.
It's all handled, Scott. Okay.
Well, and what's appropriate in the elementary school is probably inappropriate in the school and high school or vice versa. So is there a way, if you write policy, it's gonna have to be.
You can have policies specific to certain groups of. I don't know. Okay, so I'll talk to Scott and we'll figure out the appropriate way to have this conversation that is more at a board level instead of, you know, using this one, a basket in the classroom. I'm just excited. But, um, so, so yeah, I took that note.
And we're gonna move into the next one?
Academic performance review. So this is having to do with World's Best Workforce.
So essentially at the last meeting, as we're going through the world's best workforce issue, what I heard were kind of core, core questions that you wanted each building to take the look at. There was in our agenda packet, how are we getting to the position that we are with World's Best Workforce Report? Why are we, why are we in the position we are? Who sees that information that's offered in a report? How is each building using RTI or processes to set goals, personal programs, share information about the status of the site and what's being done to change things that a year from now will be different from where we were today? In a nutshell, that's kind of what I heard you saying as board members wanting to walk through that with each of the principals. So we have asked all the administrators to either, I don't know if you wanna take it by building or if you want to, how you'd like to approach it. That's kind of what we've talked about, it is that we address it by building and take the look at. Essentially those four questions.
To me, it makes sense to address that as a full group. Because to me, some of the questions that I have are more global. You know, when I, when I was going through the World's Best Workforce, um, report, it's, my, my thoughts were, you know, do you, or what, at the board level, I'm thinking, have we supported you in the way that you needed to be supported? Are we providing the right policies or the right, you know, budget process for you to, to get, get you to where you need to go? I know there's some nuance with the data as well, they don't, how the data is collected. And so some of the things that aren't necessarily that we're not achieving or whatnot. I think we're just beginning to have a conversation, so we better understand.
There's that piece, but I think there's also the piece that we have to be willing to, I mean, the World's Best Workforce Report is what it is, right? We have to report on what they, what they're saying we have to report on. Whether we think it's valid data or the best data or whatever is not really up for discussion because we can't change that. So how do we make sure that we're setting goals that are realistic? Because it appears that maybe we're not because we're not, we haven't hit them and we're actually going backwards in some of the areas. So what do we do to set more realistic goals? And then how do we, how do we perform or, or teach our kids to some of those data points? Which is maybe not what we wanna be doing because there are way, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, whether or not testing is the right way to measure whether our kids are really learning and I get all of that, but the reality is we have to report this. And so how do we make ourselves, and I think I set this up at the Teaching and Learning Committee, that what's on that report is what people are gonna see. And so looking at it right now, it doesn't paint a really good picture for us. So how do we help it paint a better picture?
The question, were the goals set to high or unrealistic?
I don't know, I mean, I, I mean, we missed ours by a couple of percentage, but we made growth in every area.
Yeah, in high school.
Yeah, secondary, middle school, high school. Actually, middle school, we were really happy with our growth last year. You know, and I told my staff, you know, I can walk through us and be good. How, how we do ours at the secondary building in terms of World's Best Workforce. We obviously get our data in the spring, MCA, yay, and ACTs. Uh, we kind of spend the summer looking at it and as, as we can, like, once we get that, that's why this budget thing is always a big deal in the fall for us is that, or in the spring for us is that we look at our scores and we start saying, "Okay, we're gonna need to add this here. We're gonna need to add this here for math. We're gonna need to add this staff member here, take this away and so on." So all of that kind of plays into it. And so as you get that data, you start working those interventions. What, and our interventions at the secondary building are very different than the interventions at the, at the elementary. We have actual classes built into those kids' schedule. So like when you hear me say at the middle school, it's, it's really hard when you have kids coming below grade level into the middle school at sixth grade or seventh grade and we have to say, "Sorry, Johnny, you can't take foods class today because you've got, you're below benchmark in reading." The nice thing though is when we look at our projections from six to 10 and six to 11, our kids make phenom, I mean, they're, they're not starting out great, but they make phenomenal growth. The problem with that is and what we struggle with at the middle school is how do we get them experiences into those electives and so on? So that they can experience some of that, but still get that reading intervention or that math intervention. So all of that plays into, so once we get our scores in the spring, we say, "All right, we've got X amount of kids coming in either from sixth grade, we've got this many from seventh, this many from eighth, let's figure out our interventions." What is a reasonable or rational goal that we can set? What is an expected one-year growth rate for those kids? What can we expect that we, and then you kind of tweak with it, you play with it, you look, you look at it and say, "Okay, is this realistic?" Is this, you know, at one time we had to be a hundred percent by whatever, 2019. You know, and so you just took a hundred and you backed it down. You're expected to make fifty percent growth in one year. You knew that wasn't gonna happen, but that's what your goal had to be. And so as you work through that, you start, and there really isn't no science, I mean, there is some science behind it, but you're really kind of looking at that cohort saying, "Where do we think we could get these kids to?" And there's where you start creating that. And where we do it is out of our building RTI teams. Um, they come in the fall, they do it before school, we kind of hammer out, are these the goals? And when we looked at our goals for this year from last year, we didn't change a lot. We bumped a few numbers, but because of looking at the secondary building, we, we kind of, we're doing what we need to be doing, we just didn't quite do it. So we tweak it a few things and watch it a few things, but we basically then as a team, we sit down and we write those goals. Then, and back to school week, those, the RTI team and myself, we present that to, to you, to the entire staff. And so how that looks is, and I'm gonna steal this board here just so you can kind of see. So you have this world's best workforce up here, that's kind of governing everything. So then you go into the RTI, which we have both RTIs, middle school, high school. All right, so they kind of write the goals, they do that. This then then goes out to the staff, back to school. And then we have every staff by department, we do it by department, um, at the middle school and the high school. They then have to create a SMART goal that is aligned to our building goal. Okay, that these people created, they each created building goals, they share that to the staff. The staff go back, they go back into their departments and say, "What are we gonna do to help contribute to those goals on our world's best workforce?" Then twice a month, they have collaboration and we orchestrate or manipulate, we do that through electronic binders saying, "Where are you at? Where are you at in terms of this SMART goal that you said?" So again, like I said, we should never, ever, ever be surprised of what our scores are on the MCA's. We, you know, and throughout this process then, you've got, uh, we do map testing, NWA testing at the middle school and we do it twice a year. And what that does is it tells us, "All right, how are we doing on our interventions?" And those are specifically for the, we don't go by grades. We go by that data point really in terms of progress monitoring towards our goals, making sure that those kids are ready for that MCA or that they're gonna make growth. And we're not always talking about proficiency at the secondary building. We're always talking about growth. We don't expect a kid who's at a thirty to get a fifty, but we want a kid who's at a thirty to get a thirty-five or a forty in one year's time, which is substantial growth. So we know that maybe she's not gonna pass, but we're tracking their growth. So then in eighth grade, we can continue that track and continue that track all the way up.
What we have is we have some data, data sheets that have come directly from MDE that indicate that if you score this score on this year's test, next year, your, what we consider high growth, would be this score. So for the individual student, we can break it down into, so that, that student knows, "Okay, this was my score this year. Now, if I were to make high growth to close that achievement gap, this is where I need to be."
Does any individual student has that personal goal?
The intervention teachers, because that's where our focus is then is with those interventions. Our intervention teachers have that and that's when they're working with their kids, that's what they're striving for. So when they set their goal for the kid in their class, that's the end goal and that's where they're, they're shooting for, so they get back from there to make those progress monitoring decisions.
So how there's a, we just asked like in December, "Every department, show us your progress report." We gave them five questions regarding their SMART goal and so then they had to come back and give us this information and then we'll have another one at the end of March in terms of that, which is all structured through QCOM as well, the PLC time. So it really, actually, it really helps us, um, work our building goal. If that makes sense.
And then some of those percentages, I know you had talked about, you know, are they too high? Are they, those are too big? Well, some of our subgroups, we're working with smaller numbers of kids. So a percentage of ten, fifteen percent growth could be three, four, five kids. So you gotta take that into consideration too is the, the, the number of kids may be a small number, which has a huge impact on the percentage growth for that particular area.
Right, so then are we taking that into consideration though when we set that growth, growth percentage? You know what I mean? Because if we're taking it into consideration when we set the growth percentage that it's a small sample.
Yep.
Then we can't also fall back on that as the reason why, you know what I mean?
Yep.
I mean, there could still be situations.
Well, I, I agree with you. I think the biggest thing you have to do is own your problem. You know, if you continue to make excuses, I tell my staff this all the time, but not saying you're a bad teacher if our reading score is here. It's not about your teaching, maybe it's what you're teaching, maybe it's how we're teaching, some of those things, let's take a look at that, let's, let's unpack this and take a look at it. But the first thing, you can't say, "Well, it's this population that's keeping me down" or "It's this population that's keeping me down" or "It's this curriculum or that curriculum."
And that was one thing that I heard at the Teaching and Learning Committee. Some of the comments were, "Well, it was a really challenging cohort" or, and that's our job, right? As teachers, it's our job to make sure that we're teaching any group, any cohort.
And that's where you start needing to start looking at the trend, the trend data. How, how are we doing over a period of time?
That's exactly, if you look at one-year snapshot, you know, like I can say, wow, I knew for, you know, I can almost say for next year, for this spring's test, I'm a little worried about my reading because I have a new reading teacher and I don't really know, the one I had, I've been teaching for twenty years. And now I have somebody to do, so I'm going, hmm, I'm not all that, not saying she's not doing her job, but I'm a little worried about it. But what you could do is, I mean, instead of looking at one year, you look at a five-year trend and you start looking at that line. Is that line consistently going down or is that line doing this or is that line? And there's where you could say, "Well, we had a bad year. There's a little dip, but overall, we're on the right track." And that's how you do your school assessment or accountability pieces. You're looking at those five-year trends saying, "Where am I at?" And there's where we're really excited, but again, it's only one year. Is that the middle school was doing this and all of a sudden now this year, we really, really focused last year with them and they did this. And we're like, "Okay, that's good." Now, are we all proud and everything? You know, I mean, yeah, we're good, but let's see what happens this year now and let's keep tracking that and making sure that we're having the system in place that needs to be.
So what did you do? I'm just curious.
We added ADSS and we added our intervention math, which we took away for Math Core.
And we added, and at the middle school, we also added, um, a building-wide focus of teacher clarity, which is something that all of the staff are engaged with using the same language as far as daily objectives and learning targets. So, um, what really focuses, uh, what am I doing in class? And what am I supposed to take away from the day, the day's lesson? So that has, has had a big impact.
As well as TNT.
So you guys, how do you make that decision? And I'm wanting to learn the process, so.
We do it through RTI.
You do it through RTI?
Yep.
And then how does that, so you develop a couple positions, I'm sure some of them we just can't afford. So how does that, how do you work through? You say, you know, we need an interventionist or we need a?
Well, you look at your teams or your students first. I mean, you look at that data, they're these data-driven, so, you know, we, we quit using grades a long time ago because grades don't really reflect learning. You know, grades is more behavior or, you know, how they play school. So we really have three data points. We have the NWAs, we have the MCA's or the ACTs. We also have read theory two that we're throwing in there. So we try to get as much information because you don't wanna say, "Well, one day you took the MCA and you tanked." Well, let's look at their three-year trend, are they doing this? And it was, okay, it was a bad year, let's hold off, let's put them on a watch list and let's do that. But then once you look at that child find, you had after the, the test, and we do that three times a year. We do it with the NWAs twice and then we do it with the MCA's. You're looking at those kids saying, "This kid's doing this, we need to get some help. We need to get this kind of help or into that." And that's how you start in the spring, that's how we do our staffing. So when we get the MCA results from all the, all the fifth and sixth graders as well as the seventh and eighth, we start looking at how many of those kids. And that's really our problem point is where, how many intervention people do I need? And how many kids are out of classes going into an intervention?
How do you get those resources?
Do I win?
Does it, how do you get the resource for that? Do you, it becomes a job description that you write, say, "Scott, I need this person to..."
Yeah, we've, but we've had a reading teacher for years, both at the middle school, high school, where we've probably added more so is math.
Okay.
In terms of that.
So you're looking at each.
We've also, ADSS has been huge for us.
So, so your RTI group looks at each student, so we know? It's not like, okay, the class is doing okay and you're looking at every kid, so we're really individualizing what's going on.
Yeah, and, and it's all color coordinated, so we can really get a good snapshot of looking at those, and at individual students, how they have done over time to say, "Okay, do they or do they not need to, that's cause that big intervention for themselves."
It's actually very helpful for people coming outside of our district to say, you know, like they've done a math test or something, or we ran into this at one time is you'd have a school where there's maybe thirty kids and you're at the top of that class and you're thinking, "Hey, I'm honors or whatever." And so you're, you're looking at, "Oh my gosh, how do I place?" But then when you look at the math test, when they take the math test, they're kind of right here. And you're like, "Well, where you were coming from, you were really there, but now in this group of two hundred kids, here's where you're at more so." And so it's helped with our parents to really kind of have those kinds of discussions and see the data in terms of helping out. Yeah, I'm hat, like I said, is it a perfect system? No, we're always tweaking it, but I think at the secondary, we've, we've got things, I think where we need them in terms of this piece.
Do you, and do you feel like you have the resources? Do you feel like you have the proper resources? Because that's what I'm thinking about as a board member. When you identify a need for, you know, math, and you say it.
I think the last couple of years, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think, and I think ADSS, the grant is huge for us.
Is that just from the high school, middle school or?
No, they, it's spread out now to K eight.
Okay.
Well, then the next year.
That's my guy.
I bet you know, right? K eight is math for next year.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we are gonna have to look at math, I'm gonna add. But I don't know where it all shakes out to the middle school in terms of numbers. So I don't know what that will look like quite yet, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna go back to. We had a system where, you know, if a kid needs reading and math, and I don't mean to take all this time up to the middle school, great shirt, but yeah. You know, a system for, you know, if your kid is short in reading and math, they need both those interventions. Before we would have, so you have a six period a day. So they have four core classes, English, math, social and so on. And then they have two electives. Well, this poor kid would have to take a math intervention class because you need, you need your core plus extra to accelerate that speed, to get them up to grade level. So if they're below grade level, if you just give them an intervention class, you know what I mean, they're doing this with the rest of their peers. You've got to give them extra on top of that to help their growth accelerate. And so those poor kids would have reading and a math. I mean, they never have any of the fun classes. I know I shouldn't say that as an English teacher, but the electives is what the kids call them. They're the fun classes. And so what ADSS did for us, and then last year when we were able to get that extra person, is what we decided to do is we decided to shorten up the intervention. So we have actually three staff members last year. We don't this year. We have three staff members working with one cohort of kids. So let's say you have an intervention time, you'd get 30 minutes of reading, 30 minutes of math. And if you didn't need one of those two, you'd get what we call FISH, a focused intense study hall, which is also an intervention for some of our kids. And it's basically where they call the teachers, they get all the homework and they sit down with that kid on how to time manage and work through that stuff. And so those three would be able to work with that group. So you had, you know, you had three people working with 30 kids. So the ratio is one to 10, obviously. But we saw huge results because of that. The other thing then is when ADSS, which is actually a fourth person now, could come in and pull kids out, you know, one or two of the really low kids or whatever, it really gave more individual attention as well as the ADSS has done wonders for our EL kids. They really do a lot of time with that. That has helped us intensely because that's probably half their days working English, math with our EL.
So if you have three for 30 kids or a pad or whatever, how many times a day does that happen? So how many, so you can cover 90 kids?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then those fluctuate each trimester because some kids will test out, they'll do well. They'll met it and then some kids all of a sudden will find out, whoa, you know, they're dropping. Let's get them in hopefully for a trimester and that's it.
All right, Mark, you are passionate about this and it's fun to listen to you. You have.
I know.
See the year. If anybody has a, if they feel like. Important question that if they want to follow up with, I can, but otherwise I think we should move on. Is that okay? No, you're, no, it's great. We really appreciate it. All right. Was the intention of the next, of the next one to be just for spring or would it be all grown out? Which is close to.
Well, I'm sure we haven't finished part B, so.
So bring them all together? Okay, yeah. So we'll talk about.
Which one, wait, which one Jake?
Don't take the answer. Thank you, Jake. Thank you, Mark.
You get the big presentation that you've got.
Is this a clean one?
I'll go last because I even have like PowerPoint and other things. Hold on, you guys can go ahead.
Well, Sam and I were talking, visiting briefly during Mark's presentation that that fits in really well with the process that we do in our elementary schools as well. Of course, Richmond and Rockville are smaller.
Squishy.
We don't have two RTI teams and we don't have three departments that meet. But we do follow the process of the RTI teams created the World's Best Workforce Schools. That was one of our first meetings in the boardroom in August using the data. And then we brought them back to our buildings, to our staff. And that's how we created our SMART goals. But our SMART goal is our building-wide because we don't have grade level bands horizontally to work with. And so when our SMART goal is created, then we meet two times a month, one time a month just in our buildings. And then the other time, we meet with the whole grade level bands across the district.
During our three-hour running outs, that's when all the third grader, all the kindergarten teachers be able to come together and look at data and go through. We're just going up on our second round of our FAST data. And so we've been really diving deep pretty. With that, this year, the district RTI team did some work to see, does it, you can hear from all these, all these different companies that sell you their tests that supposedly predict the MCAs and have a good correlation. And FAST is out of, it's out of U of M, so it's a, it's a great, great service. But locally, we went and actually did our last three years and looked at, does it actually, you know, predict the MCAs for our students here in record? And if you have a high correlation, it's around 0.8 correlation. If you're familiar with that, it's strong, very strong. We had 0.91 at some of our fifth grade, some of our fifth grade dips. Like in, I think last year, it was a 0.91 correlation between that. So, you know, our work as a principal is then kind of communicating that to our staff, explaining that, how do we then, you know, use that with parents too? And how to explain, okay, yeah, your kid has been showing really well, but correlation is still only a correlation. It's not an exact measure, right? You know, generally you would multiply, yeah, 0.8 correlation, that kid's got a 64% chance of doing it, which is a good chance, but it's not perfect. So there are still always those kind of watch list kids or what we're going to call probably classroom intervention students at the elementary level. So we're, at the high school level, you get a whole class of intervention students. And the elementary side, I've got a third grade of kids who need pull out for title math. I've got students who are using special education services for reading. And then I've got these kids who might need a classroom intervention. You know, so maybe this group of three would benefit from a fluency intervention that I can do or that I could have our, one of our learning coaches come in and teach me how to do a fluency intervention. So.
The beauty of what we're working on now as a team is we combine some of the things that we learned from the press workshops that our intervention staff attended earlier this fall. That's also a University of Minnesota initiative. And we've taken some of their work and our instructional coaches have created forms that we benchmark the data per classroom. And so when Sam talks about doing these assessments at the classroom level, when you list each child and their FAST assessments, CBMA reading, and then you put their MCA score, their triangle, the third data point, and you're able to see if there's a pattern within your classroom or if it's one or two children, then you know, hey, I need to have an intervention group with just these three differentiated within my classroom. I need to have the interventionist work with this child or these three. Or hey, I've got a large percentage of my classroom that needs the same intervention. Then we have steps in place to help the teacher to understand what they need to teach to provide the whole class with the intervention. So it's really, it's enlightening. We're just midstreaming that right now.
I know we have some staff that have been here a long time and probably know the ADSS, but in each of the buildings, I think we've got some new staff. How are they dealing with all of this? Because especially if they're really new, this is a lot of stuff coming at them.
I can probably answer that. So some of the things that we've been talking about, especially over the last couple of weeks, and we've not taken the next step to get together and talk about any implementation timeline yet. But we know that much like students learn in the classroom, it's the teacher shows an example. The teacher helps the students together and then we expect them independent. So it's called a gradual release model. It's the same thing that we're talking about with our staff members, whether they've been here for 25 years or that they're in their first year. When you heard Ms. Holberg talk about the new data sheets and working with their coaches, that's our plan coming up on the 26th, is that we're going to be doing some modeling with them, how to look at the data, how to put it into these analytic sheets that will spit out who needs classroom interventions, who needs more intense interventions with their intervention staff. So we're going to be helping them practice looking at data in that way over the course of this year with an idea of full implementation come fall 18.
So, yeah, right now, we probably aren't going to see much results this year.
Um, no, I mean, it should start. We're going to be, I don't want to say holding hands. That might be not the right way, but, you know, we're going to be teaching them first. We need to teach them how to look at the data in this particular set with these particular assessments.
The beauty is that this week is our, our last week of FAST testing. So we're testing reading and math just this week. Actually, the 19th is the, is the deadline for the final assessment. So we will have really, really fresh data for our staff to look at and look for those growth patterns since fall.
The other piece you'll see too, I'm sorry to interrupt, but is, I mean, the new math curriculum too. So you've got, what we're talking about here is an RTI and our intervention. And if following a true RTI model, that should be about 15 to 20% of your students. The other 80%, if we want to keep them up above that proficiency level or even up in the exceeds, has to be done with the work of that classroom teacher through your core. So by building our core through the curriculum that we're providing and the instruction that we're providing through teachers, that's where you're going to get the most thing for you about, you can't really, there's a given ten, I guess I should say.
How are we making sure that teachers are teaching core all the way through? We've got both some new ones and we probably have some staff that have been here a long time who go, well, I've always been teaching this way. Why should I do it differently?
I can go first on that one. So part of that becomes my responsibility of walking through classrooms, having conversations with teachers, checking out the environment, you know, in that walkthrough fashion. This past, or not this past, through January, one of the checks that I've been doing with staff members is a conferring check. So knowing that we want kids working on time on text and implementing a particular strategy around daily five and cafe, one of the checks that I do through all my Janet staff is they all sit down for 15 minutes and we start talking about how they're implementing. They need to show me their assessments. I check out the environment. I see what strategies they have posted on the wall. And you get very good, you get very good feedback whether, to what extent that strategy has been implemented. Now in February, it's going to be around math talk, which is about our new expressions curriculum. So for me, it is always having those conversations, visiting the classrooms. You know, you collect certain assessments to make sure that that's following aligned with expectations around the new math curriculum so that it is getting implemented.
So is everyone doing what they're supposed to be?
Well, in an initial implementation year, I would say yes. I mean, there's some people that are farther along on that continuum than others, but everybody is in the curriculum and working through it. I know that our math experts are coming together to talk about some implementation expectations. What parts are we expecting in this first year of initial implementation?
Next January, the trainers are coming back and they'll work with their kindergarten and then third grade teams individually. And then our train, the trainers, the people with the experience that have been going through the PD part of math expressions at the elementary level. And they'll be talking about which content pieces need to be taught each year and coming to some consensus about what assessments will be used for both the benchmarking process and for grading purposes. Because there are lots of little pieces, I'm sure that you've altered as we go, lots of mini assessments along the way. So they'll be having those pedagogical conversations about what's next and what should be used and making sure that it's grade level wide, that we're using the same thing no matter what building we're in.
Well, I have a question about like the title program and how that fits into the success. Because my understanding is that they're, they're forming new groups right now. So they're sort of on a break and then with FAST testing happening right now, like is that detrimental to the performance on those tests? Because we're not utilizing our resources to the fullest potential? Is there any opportunities there or can you elaborate on that a little bit?
I could probably talk about that. So we're interim right now. So as we moved into holiday break, the title program did stop as they were coming into holiday break. And as the title staff has come back in for these, it's about two and a half weeks that the testing window is open to make sure that we get through everybody in testing with the new FAST assessments and CBMs.
Are the title teachers actually doing the testing?
They are doing some of it. They'll come through and sweep with the early reading and then they're forming the new groups. So that takes about, probably about two weeks, two and a half weeks.
Early reading to do with kindergarten first, it's important in sense of class. It's about five minutes per student. So you expect a classroom teacher to be able to do it. It's difficult. You can do it, but it's, it's nice to have the assistants from the title team be able to come in.
Support and come through, just to make sure that the consistency and the delivery of the assessment is more standardized by who's giving it. And it's a nice support model to make sure that we're supporting the classroom teachers to help with those assessments as well. It takes a little bit of time to run the data and reprocess it and to see who falls in that qualification area. But we should, the plan is to be up and running with title new groups again by the 22nd. So when you throw in short week and MLK and them going out and helping all the assessments happening, we think it's appropriate. Of course, we always look at that. But really, one of the issues there is we could probably do it faster if I could move through testing faster at Coltrane Elementary. But just the sheer number of sections that I have to move through now, they have so many devices to do the testing. So that makes it a little bit longer at Coltrane Elementary as compared to Rockville, Richmond, which I think you guys are done in like two days.
Two days. Two and a half. That's a lot smaller than the mentioned. Yeah, more.
But, yeah.
Pretty quick. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that we're using resources, you know, to help our kids succeed. And I just don't know if that's, you know, obviously helping with the test administration.
Do you get like a summer slump almost, just they're not.
I mean, part of the issue is if we were to continue to run the groups as is, a lot of those kids may miss because of the testing schedule. Because we're testing all day long and have a different testing session. So it's, it's not ideal. You know, I would love to see that shortened up, but without some additional computer lab space and other things, I'm not sure we can shorten it up. And I'm not saying that we necessarily need another computer lab either, because that's a giant cost. You know, I'd rather see that go somewhere else. So I think that we're trying to find that fine balance between testing, service, looking at the data, having data meetings with the Janet teachers so they understand the interventions that are coming up. All those things happen in this interim session and then they'll get it again. They'll go strong till the end of the year.
And even with missing like a title course, if they have a title twice a week, they're still getting core math and core reading from the classroom teacher every day. So they're not going without any math for two and a half weeks or any reading. You know, it's, they're still being continued, they're still continuing on. They're in the classroom if it's not a testing session, even though they're not getting pulled out for title, they're even in the classroom for that half hour intervention block. So I know a lot of teachers will definitely use that time to pull them into one of their small groups and give them another dose on top of that.
And I guess coming from district districts, is that how your different districts handle this? This testing and the title programming or is there a different perspective or different opportunities that you invite?
Title programming is very different in Valley Watkins. We had push-in and it was paraprofessionals. We didn't have a lead title one teacher that did the full intervention that we had here. Assessments are done by classroom teachers.
We, I'm in Gammet, I'm in five other districts, so some things we do really well. I joke with the title team because they often meet at CSC and I can tell when they're meeting because it's just electric and you get these questions out of the team saying, well, what about this? What if we change this? What if we take this? And it's, it's incredible. And so, I mean, you really, you can't, you know, yes, they're not meeting with students, but when they do have that time to collaborate, the decisions that they make can really make an impact. They're, they're an incredibly strong team.
They are.
And they, you know, they ask the right questions. They really, they're, they're one of the groups in the district right now that I would say they're, that are driving us to look at our data and to use it the right way.
And to look at the whole program, some interventions to core, to, I mean, everything. They don't pick up just their intervention as the main cause here. You look at the whole picture, it's a secret.
I think it's amazing to have you as a resource with all that experience because then you can see what has worked, what hasn't worked and what, you know, what maybe we could change. You know, instead of, you know, this is what we've done, we're just going to stick with this. And so I think.
A little bit later, when they have the full PowerPoint, I'll talk a little bit about title services and what has changed from last year to this year. We've made some.
Yeah, I guess that was my question because in some of the curriculum meetings only a year ago, I heard questions on if we're using our title people to basically work with the kids on concepts they didn't understand versus the idea of more of a curriculum that they just worked on that didn't necessarily coincide with what those kids specifically needed.
Yeah, I can actually probably just talk about it now because it's probably more relevant in context. So as we, so I had the pleasure of taking over the title grant of this last year and writing that title programs grant. Because we're writing it last year, we met with the title staff and really talked about being responsive and flexible with how we meet student needs. One of the pieces that they felt very strongly about was the approach that we had taken in the past, really box them in and did not allow them to get kids what they need because they were giving them prescribed comprehensive curriculum, intervention curriculum, which means everybody that comes to me and my six students, we're going to run this card. And for these two weeks, either the skills were working on whether you particularly need them or not, who are ready for them, that's a comprehensive approach. They felt very strongly that we should move to a targeted intervention approach, which is a lot more complicated and dynamic. It's not as easy to deliver. Again, it's an incredible group to work with. So they've been really responsive in how they've been attacking this. So instead of running the cards, what they do is they look at every individual kid, look at the particular need they, that they need by giving them a diagnostic, figuring out what is it that they exactly need in the taxonomy of skill requisites I come, and then grouping kids according to that. So you may have three kids that are getting a specific fluency intervention for six weeks. You may have another group of three kids that are getting a specific phonemic awareness intervention for three weeks. And that's different than the approach that we've had before. And we're really excited to see the approach with that. Some of the things that have made that possible are the work and the training through press, through the University of Minnesota. And then also some of the background work we've done with Hora Gillenbaum to be able to do some multisensor education with the intervention approaches. So we keep building the tool chest for our intervention staff with some very specific things that they can work on with the kids and have the intervention match the need. things that they can work on with the kids and have the intervention match the need. Instead of, it's more of a, excuse the term, it's more of a rightful approach than a shotgun approach. So we zero in right on what they need, work that until they get to a success, you know, we move to the next part of the taxonomy where they need to work on.
The other thing I have the title teachers complain, complain, I happen to be friends with one of the title teachers, so I had a little time talking with her, was that sometimes, you know, it should be what, fifteen percent of the kids that need the extra, but in some cases we were having like way higher numbers out of some classes that needed it, which she said, kind of said that the teacher in that classroom wasn't teaching the core aspects that needed to be taught. Do you get feedback from the title teachers and how is that used in making sure that then those classroom teachers are, are being responsible to cover all the core aspects and kids are actually learning it like they should and not band-aiding and all with, you know, sending kids to title?
Well, we did have some suspects around that, or if that's the right word, but we were, we did take a look at the, at the class-wide data and when the title staff ran against the press numbers and the press inventory, basically, what it showed is that no classrooms needed a class-wide intervention, which would show that this is a part of the core. Part of that conversation, if I'm remembering right, was taking a look at spring data versus fall data. And when we reran it with, we had some teachers take optional fall fast testing in first grade particularly, what we saw was that there was maybe an increased need that didn't match what we saw in the spring. Our guess there is that we had a summer slide and that we're going to see that bounce back here come spring because the, at least at Coltspring Elementary, I can speak to the first grade staff, Coltspring Elementary is phenomenal. And they've been doing some really great things, including some class-wide Orta Gillenham and the awareness pieces. It was pretty fun to see in practice actually. So yes, we thought maybe that was happening. We ran it against our diagnostic in our, in our checks and that told us that we didn't need a class-wide intervention.
So to cut a circle back, you know, everything that we've heard and all of the things that are being done to work to improve the results of our World's Best Workforce, how confident do you guys feel, and I'm just looking at question four on this agenda, how confident do you feel we'll see scores that either meet the goals or show significant improvement? Because I think specifically in the elementary levels, that's where we saw majority of, I mean, I remember correctly, Richmond-Rockville had some, if not majority, where you met or exceeded, but Coltspring Elementary, majority of it went backwards. We actually declined from where we were the year before. So with everything that's been talked about, how confident are you in, in being able to see improvement in the next year?
I know we talked earlier about cohorts and that shouldn't matter. I guess I will tell, I guess I have a different opinion on that, that cohorts do matter. That's not an excuse. We know that as kids come into the testing window of third grade, we see different attributes and different experiences and different capabilities of each cohort that comes through. I, I suspected that last year's test results were going to be a little bit lower as I had two very lower academically performing cohorts come into the testing window, a third and a fifth grade. And I think my comment at the, the teaching and learning is that as that third grade came through with those scores, one reaction would be to look at that and go, oh, that's disappointing. Knowing as I've watched that group come in at kindergarten and the work that's happened in first grade, second grade, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, I can confidently look at that cohort score and go, phew, they nailed it for that group. That doesn't mean that we're done working with them or that we're not going to keep moving them forward, but...
So that kind of gets to the point of proficiency versus growth and are we, is World's Best Workforce looking at proficiency? Yes.
The state's in a, the state's in a, in a holding year right now, unfortunately, because they've gone away from the MMR, the more full measures rating, which, which did take into account growth and took into account including the achievement gap. They took that away and narrowed it just this year just as proficiency. So that is really the only thing we're measuring on this year. They, I can't say that they chose that because that's what they think is the best choice. They chose that because they know that they're going somewhere else next year or the year after or whenever they're able to make their decision on how best to measure student performance. But they kind of really pared everything down this year.
So what gets difficult, like in my ten years, I've been, you know, we've looked at Z-scores, we've looked at AYP proficiency, then it changed to MMRs, and then it was growth levels, and now we're back to proficiency levels. So it keeps, it's hard to have those year-to-year comparisons when we don't get the same information.
So...
And that's, that's not an excuse. That's, that points to me to the fact that we should look at other data sets to look at growth of our students.
When we set the World's Best Workforce goals though, which are the things we have to work for, we know that they're for third and fifth grade, right? And we know who's, we know which groups are going to be moving into those grade levels. So can't we set the goals more realistic to the levels rather, you know, and maybe that, maybe that would look silly because one year you might be, your goals might be here because you know they're lower and then the next year they might be lower.
I can answer that a little bit too because I believe we were at a sixty-eight percent in math the year before as a three, four, five group. You know, I could look at that and go, knowing the third grade that was coming up into the testing window, I could realistically go, you know, we should probably be having a sixty-five percent goal. Now, what looks silly about that is we're saying, I'm at a sixty-eight percent and my goal for next year is sixty-five percent. State people don't care for that. So it kind of ignores the contextual information that we know as a, as a school that's happening. And I guess that's why I'm going to say again, we, we point back to different types of data sets, ones that we know and we can control over time, which is a great one, which is fast test data. That one, as we've learned more and more about that assessment and the capabilities of it and the impact on instruction back in the classroom and helping teachers utilize that in a way that drives their instruction.
What does that say largely?
Growth. I mean, we see, we see growth over time with those.
Yeah, so I guess I...
We haven't used the facts for a very long period of time.
I think this is our fourth year or third.
Third year.
Third year.
And I don't disagree with anything that you're saying or that growth is more important than proficiency. I just worry about what, when people are making a decision to open and enroll their kids into the Recore District or any pick your other district, and those are the reports that they potentially are looking at to make that decision. What can we do to make ours paint a better picture and still be accurate, you know, still be honest?
Well, as you talk to other districts, I mean, they gotta go through the same issue. So again, I've not looked or compared against what other districts have.
I think we talked about trying to find if we, didn't we talk about that the last meeting? We asked if somebody could hold data on how we compared our World's Best Workforce reports.
The state will not give us any of those World's Best Workforce reports. They still say they're not.
Yeah. And so as a former educator, you know, no child left behind. I, I've been through them, you know, so I get that they're not always going to do a great job of measuring them. Unfortunately, I think what we're saying is as these things come down the pike, we somehow have to try to figure out, you know, you hate to use the analogy, play the game, but we have to figure out how do we give our teachers flexibility to teach the way they feel basketball. We also need to make sure we're, which I think a lot of things that you guys have been talking about, how do we get to those numbers where, you know, this is where kids are going to be tested on. This is what we're going to have to show them. So hopefully as, you know, again, if this is going away, which it sounds like...
Well, something else will come in its place.
Right. Something will come in its place.
Yeah.
As it does, I think last year we said, or we just said, we just want realistic measurements. You know, we just want to make sure that we're actually have a chance to get there. And if we can't see what other schools are doing, then that means that nobody can see what other schools are doing, but, you know.
I was saving this for a little bit later too, but, you know, one of the things I think that we need to realistically think about, setting goals is one thing. And yes, it does go in the World's Best Workforce. For me, it's always been more important about what is our change strategy, what are the inputs that we're putting in to get different outcomes? And that's some of the things that we've been talking a lot about on inputs, so new math curriculums, new intervention approaches, the two that just stick with me.
Is there, there's a new reading curriculum that's being...
New reading curriculum.
Is that, would that be implemented throughout all buildings?
Next year.
Okay. And then would that replace like Cafe and stuff like that or...
Actually, they'll work really well together because there's a differentiation piece within Wonders that will allow us to still use the D5 in the Cafe.
Cafe will be more of an instructional approach and then the curriculum will be what...
So maybe the other question is how do we get our full message out to our, our media community and outliers that maybe are looking at Recore School District as a possibility? How do we get them the full picture of growth and everything that we are doing that maybe isn't painted well and just...
Well, yeah. I still want to go back to, you know, right now, your scores in Coltspring Elementary aren't meeting the expectations. The other two schools are not doing too bad. And yet, when we bring all those kids together at the middle school level, they've been able to take the whole group and raise them up and get it so that we're meeting the goals that we need to or pretty close to meeting the goals. So what is it now that we aren't getting the Coltspring Elementary kids there sooner? Because if they can do it at sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade and get them up, why aren't we getting them up at third and fourth and fifth?
Partially that's a math theme to be, if you, if you look at it, because what we're doing then is taking all of these other groups here, denominator gets to be bigger and this, some of the students that are struggling, you're going to see a different percentage based on the denominator. So...
But doesn't World's Best, World's Best Workforce combine all of your, all of the buildings under Wonders, right? So your, the overall result for World's Best Workforce for elementary is all of you combined. We just break it out for our own purposes.
Right, and we're adding Holy Cross, St. Onofis, we've got Influx in sixth grade coming.
Well, no, but you're, no, you're saying that, I think you're saying in the element, like right now, our total numbers are all of you together is what we report.
Right, and we're low there. We're low, even though Richmond may be meeting and, and Rockville may be meeting in areas, when you combine it all together, we're below.
We're still low.
Yeah.
So one of the, one of the reasons if you look specifically at our reading scores, and that's going to impact that drastically, which we're, you know, we addressed it a little bit tonight, we have zero percent of our English learners that are passing a test. And that's, that's eleven to twelve percent of my, my testing population. We have to do something differently. That's, that's not okay. And I openly talk about that, you know, we talked to, Mr. Jensen talked earlier about owning your problem. We have to do something differently about that. That's, that's simply just not okay and that will drastically impact any of those outcomes. And if you look at the comparisons of EL learners in Recore, Coltspring Elementary, if you want to talk about it, compared to other places, we underperform. We underperform with our English learner students. So that's not something I like to say out loud because I have a huge equity lens in, in my belief system and that does not feel good to me. And we have to do something differently about it.
What are we doing and what are we trying to do? What, I mean, this has been a problem for a while, so it's not like it just happened this last year or two.
If you look at the improvement list, I've been asking for an additional EL teacher. So I'm happy to hear that some of that is coming.
We gave them. Did we get two new EL people two years ago?
Three, four.
And then we cut pairs. We reduced, did we change the structure of it? Were there like four pairs of two teachers and we went down to four teachers? Is that how you did it?
We can have pairs and, you know...
We had some pairs of four.
But so, and what we're hearing though is that even with whatever happened two years ago, it's still not enough resources.
It's not enough and there's been a lot of, a lot of staff changes. You know, I have two brand-new to the building EL teachers this year. Last, you know, two years ago, I had added their E1. So there's been a lot of turnover through that department. I would say that EL programming, as EL programming is one thing, and then the programming in our Janet staff, how to approach those in our Janet classrooms, both of those things need some significant work to really shore up what, what are the approaches that are going to have some impact.
Who does EL report through? Is that through, and I, I'm just curious like how it, because it used to go through the CIA office, right?
Yep.
And so how is it, what's the structure have been out?
This year, reports to, this just asked earlier.
And we looked at the, sorry, we looked at the math expressions, our new math does not have an EL component. Actually made some one-on-one phone calls to find out what they could do and they, they don't have anything. And I think that speaks volumes for 2018 copyright, that there's no EL component. Our Wonders program that was recently approved to go for our elementary buildings has an EL component and is being piloted at this time. So that should assist in that development stage for our EL learners because it exactly parallels what's being taught in the mainstream classroom.
It also looks at and talks to how are we using our data too, because we've really had a long conversation with our, with our title team. You can tell when they're, they're meeting as having an EL student in a title class, is that the best use for them? Like an EL student's, you know, area, biggest area of growth for them is probably giving them language proficiency, not necessarily content knowledge or, or reading, you know, phonemic awareness. They, they need to learn English first before we can be able to really diagnose and see, you know, what part of math they really need help with. So we're being a little more intentional with our, with our title interventions and without interventions as to whether or not our EL students should be there, which then, you know, because again, you're shifting your, your, your resources and looking at that.
Although some districts, I talked to a district at the school board convention last year, that they were dealing with that by having the content taught in the child's native language. And then they were still, you know, in EL programs to learn the language so that they kept up with the content. They could learn it in something they understood and meanwhile are learning.
So are you thinking of like, or would this be worth their, their newcomers? Where they would have like a jumpstart, one or two-year program?
It's one of the western suburb, suburb districts.
And they totally got it in St. Paul and I guess they went away with, if that's, if this is what I'm thinking, is they had the, they put all the EL learners as soon as they came in, in a class and they had an EL teacher and a classroom teacher and they, and they did, they would teach in their native language and move up. And that's a, and that's a great program, model. It's expensive. It's hard to find teachers who are proficient in that first language and certified for elementary education. So like, we would be stealing from ClearView basically as much as we can and we could play that game.
I think one of the interesting things too, when you look at our, our EL learners or our students, what happens with them is they're not necessarily a, a non-English speaker, but they come from a non-English speaking home. So what happens is, is they really just have a low language, low vocabulary count, which totally impacts how they can understand the content. So it's not that we're teaching them English, it's that we're, we need to teach them academic English to be able to participate in. Do the same as if any of us went to Mexico and enrolled in university. We'd have a pretty hard time keeping up. Maybe we can speak, you know, conversational Spanish.
And go to restaurants.
Go to restaurants, you know, we abide with polite, polite, polite Spanish. We have a really hard time participating.
With your connections, you know, obviously they all use Melrose because I'm guessing they've got a larger population. Do they obviously have some of the same struggles? But have we, have we tried to tap into some of those places?
Yeah. At the Federal Programs Network in, in Resource Training Solutions, Melrose is there. We had a good conversation last time about what they're doing. One of the things that they did say is that they do not serve Level One in their Title One program. They also do a ton with after-school programming and extended school day and extended summer programming. So those are some of the changes that I'm looking at for this next...
So Level One, so what, what do they do with Level One?
So there's, yeah, so there's four or five levels of English, English proficiency. Basically zero is, you know, no English and then you kind of work your way up. Basically, zero is, you know, no English and then you kind of work your way up.
So what do they, where do their kids go? Because they got a fair.
They have the EL program. So they're working on academic English until they have enough, until they've moved up into a Level Two where they can participate in.
All right, so they're, they're, they're taken care of, I'm just outside of this program. Because what I'm hearing says that over the years, these numbers have, you know, really been impacted a lot by our, our needs and things going, you know.
And not exclusively.
No, but it's, but it's definitely effective. It pulls other resources, it affects, you know, the overall landscape.
So, you know, but, and it's also, I mean, but we also need to start looking at it as a benefit as well too, because you've got students graduating from the high school, a higher percentage of students graduating from the high school are probably.
I'm not saying it's just bad.
Right, but being ready for the world market, you know, and their, their global students.
But if this has been the ongoing discussion, then, you know, we have to try to figure out, you know, what we can do to solve it.
We have plans, can we also talk, what are we doing with the early childhood? Because I know what target is any of those Spanish, generally Spanish speaking families involved in early childhood. So can we get a head start on getting them more English language at an earlier level? Because they learn better at that level too.
So we are, we're currently working with Nicole, right? This is me, once Erin is working more closely with her on what that can look like at an early childhood level that EL services. They're looking at a couple of models from other school districts to see what they do and how they do it. And then we also have to determine what we need, who we have and what to do with them. This year, we don't have as many EL students in our program as last year even, and so we're trying to figure out why that is and try to reach them and educate them on the needs of preschool and how, how we can get them there. Sam and I have talked a couple of times just about some programming over in Rockville, either through an ECFE course or trying to partner with St. Cloud State and Thrive. They have a parent educator who's actually from Stock Rapids, all these connections, and she's willing to come to us and potentially teach an ECFE class over in Rockville with one of our child educators. So we're hoping we can make that happen. That was just happened last month. So we're going to try that and then eventually the plan would be to take over the United Way grant that St. Cloud State currently houses that runs our Friday morning program with our Hispanic population. It's kind of an ECFE model, but we'd want to extend it to be kind of a preschool with the parent. So Monday, Wednesday hypothetically would be just preschool and then the Friday week that ECFE component to help them with that. And then of course, what they're supposed to look like with that is a lot.
So, you know, obviously that's a good start. Back to this Level One question, is that a move we need to make? I mean, is that, you know, do we need, you know, because you're saying there's 11 kids that are not there, you know, is that, in your opinion, should we, you know, is that something we should be looking at and investing in? Is our population's growing, although we can't find any kids or many right now.
It's more about getting them back.
It's more of that, it's more finding.
They can't get to find out transit.
So we, yes. So that means that they're probably going to be again, starting at that lower level. So are we just continually setting ourselves up if we have a neighbor in town that says we, we don't even, we got to get them to a spot before we start throwing them into the...
So that conversation happened in December at the Title Network meeting. We're going through qualifications right now to see, and actually for the first time, we're going to be taking the district elementary list and looking to see who qualifies in a rank order sort of way. So we know where the needs are, if it's Rockville, Richmond, Cold Spring. Through that, we'll also be able to look at those compliance for LEV, which is limited English proficiency. Probably looking at the Weasors and look at some of those decisions about who goes into title programming and who gets served. And then follow-up question to that of course is, if they're not coming to title programming, what does the other EL component look like? And certainly full back to when I first walked in tonight, you know, the addition of that EL interventionist will give us some flexibility to be able to do some things, including start talking about early childhood and what does the service model look like down there? And then also actually meeting the needs at Cold Spring Elementary because, you know, we have, I believe it's 60-some EL students at the Cold Spring Elementary. And even between two, that's a, if you just were to split it, you know, that's 30 to one. We wouldn't do that to any other interventionist, we wouldn't do that to a special education teacher and the needs are as great. So we need to get to a different spot where, and that's one approach, that's part of the puzzle so that we can actually get some more individualized attention to our EL learners with our specialists. But then also the flip side of it is, what are we doing to get the elementary classroom?
So we had talked at our last meeting about middle school kind of being the catch-up grade, right? So is there something that we should be doing as a district to focus more resources at the elementary level so that we don't get to middle school and have three years of catch-up because we didn't do enough or have enough resources to be able to do more at the elementary level? I mean, you remember us talking about that, that appears like that sixth, seventh, eighth grade, maybe more seventh, eighth.
Well, I think part of the, back to what Eric was getting to is that, you know, it is a math game because we do have a lot of incoming students that are probably functioning higher than where they need to be. And so the numbers start to balance out because the resources can get put into the kids that need the help, the other kids can kind of, you know.
Right, but the worry I'm making is if those other kids then end up just kind of two to three years of this posting.
That's one of the questions, that's one of the questions that we've been exploring very heavily is, why, why is that happening? Because we've been hearing that for a couple of years about, you know, coming out of the elementary, they're, they're just not making it and we have to do all of these interventions at the middle school. And one of the pieces I think that we're exploring very heavily right now is, what is the definition of a student that needs an intervention? When you look at a title, title programming, we're typically serving the bottom 20% of our performers, which leaves a middle group that either goes into classroom intervention. At Cold Spring Elementary, we have Reading Core and in exploration with Mr. Jensen and through the RTI, District RTI, we, I think, identified that they are going all the way up to the 70th percentile. And don't quote me on that, but that leaves a pretty big gap of students that are not getting intervention at the elementary level, that they're putting into full classroom interventions. And that's a different approach. We can't do that at the elementary.
Because of, because of lack of resources or just because you can't.
Lack of resources and structure, you would, I mean, you, you want your, your small groups to be three to five students with a teacher at the elementary level and an intervention class at the middle school can be 25 students.
And I'm not saying, I, I just am questioning if there's something, if there's shifts that can be done to put more focus in the early ages or the early grade levels so that when they get to that sixth, seventh and eighth grade level, we don't have intervention needs up to 70%, you know what I mean?
I think you're seeing them happening in, in front of you right now, the move to a targeted intervention program in our intervention, with our intervention staff, the work that we've done K two and getting all of our K two and some of our specialists trained in order to go in, approaches. You know, some of these, some of these.
Well, Wardak is, is doing more with the EL program.
Yeah.
And they have, they're studying to use an assessment of their own called a TEL because often the, the FAS test and the MAX and the MCA's, they, they struggle with showing the real proficiency of a student who's EL because they're based off of, you know, it 's, they're guys usually with English first, English speakers. And so we, there's a new assessment called a TEL that they're using at the middle school and then also now we're using with the, the elementary so that, you know, yes, we have our proficiency here. You should hopefully start to see that jump, we should be able to actually watch and prove that jump as our EL students improve. And if they're not, we've got a great measure for it and we can continue to ask the questions about what.
And I, and my question, I just said more from the board level, is there things that we can do to better support you guys at the elementary level so that as kids carry up into the middle school level, maybe it isn't as much of a, of an escape level for those kids that are above that proficiency?
What about if we bring this back at a meeting in like May or something and I'd be curious to see as you guys walk through this process that you're in the middle of right now and refining some programs and changing some programs and kind of provide an update. Like this is what our new EL structure is going to look like and, you know, some potential idea, you know, we've really identified that this one is pretty low is what it's, where it's at and that's going to help our core. And it would just be interesting to hear kind of a conclusion to it and then also it would help us understand the resource standpoint when we go through such a process.
Maybe, maybe likely to.
But you, so you said after-school, but I mean, this after-school programming, you know, just use as an example, is that something currently trying to find a way to fund? We don't do it, we do do it?
No, we could fund it, the problem, you know, because I've been looking at how to put that after-school program in place. Honestly, the, the struggle with after-school and summer programming is finding staff to do it that's, that is quality.
At one point, we have, I mean, Monica said the, maybe was there, she was bringing in students from St. Ben's and St. John's and doing some after-school with the, did that work?
It was kind of like a homework level.
So how do our neighbors might like, you know, can we tap into what, you know, Melrose's resources and if they're doing these things that they have?
It's a targeted, it'd be a targeted services program that you would run and fund. Honestly, the, the struggle is staff because I started looking right away after I heard that and trying to do some different approaches at Cold Spring Elementary. I honestly cannot find quality staff because you want staff that's already internal, that knows the students, knows the building, knows the structure, knows the programs.
If you can't, if you can't find that, would, would people from external be better than nothing?
Right, that's it. I mean, we got to start somewhere.
You're still asking somebody to come in for an hour a day?
But I think what she's asking, how much, what do you need to do it?
I mean, could you potentially find people at St. Ben's, St. John's who are looking for that experience? You know, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of ways to, instead of saying we can't do it because there aren't any.
Yeah, I'm not saying I'm not trying, it's just, it's proven to be a little bit more challenging than that way.
Because those are some like great starting points. I mean, to look at, you know, what, again, using what our neighbors are doing because their population is large and they've been dealing with longer than us and, you know, how, how they started to act, you know, and what is going to cost us? Because that's what we need to do, so we need to know sooner than later and.
Yeah, I think the general themes that I've heard from previous board discussions is with World's Best Work Course, you know, the report, when you just read it, doesn't feel good. And we don't have any background information because it's kind of the first time we're seeing it. It's like, okay, here's some information, you have to endorse it. And we're, we're trying to look at as far, how do we have a better understanding of what's going into this report? And then the processes that are in place to drive results, drive improvement. And so that's like a really high level goal of the, of this conversation. So I just kind of wanted to bring it back up. And so I feel like you guys have provided us with a ton of good information. This is honestly, like, I grew up in data, this is one of my favorite conversations that we've had as a board since I've been on the board. Like I think it was a good, tough, interesting, dynamic conversation. So I'm just really appreciative of that we could, we had it in this way. And so I personally think it would make sense to bring this back, again, maybe not just with elementary staff, but have a similar conversation and update. So, because I do think that, you know, we have, the board has a problem statement of we don't want to have to approve or endorse a report that we don't feel good about, we don't have very much information on it all. And so, and you guys, you have, your problem statement is, you're trying to solve these hard problems and sometimes your hard problems are resources. And I think the budget process deals with that, but I think that this is an important piece of information for us to understand as we kind of do all of it together. Does that make sense? Hopefully her listeners do this. Sometimes when you talk, you're like, did I actually make sense?
We're excited for the, this piece to go into fruition that we've been collaborating about with gathering the data points in, in the rank order by grade level, not by building. You know, we can always subgroup that, but the rank order to see, well, do we need a full-time interventionist at Richmond Elementary? Perhaps we don't. Perhaps some of those kids are getting serviced that aren't, that don't fit into that 18% gap that we're looking at. So we're excited to see where the trends fall too.
So this is my 10th year and the pieces that are in place now around interventions and, I'll talk a little edu, education talk here, but you know, the difference of progress monitoring, diagnostics, interventions. I've never felt as good as I do going into the changes that we have going on as far as getting everybody with the buy-in, everybody plays their part. No more silos, putting the data on the table, owning the problem. It feels awesome to me to see how these pieces of the puzzle are coming together. So I would be excited to maybe come back and talk about what we've learned, where we're at with implementation, what stage we're at with implementation on some of these pieces. And then hopefully at that point, be able to more clearly define, here are the specific things we would be potentially asking for as a board in support. I think at this point, we feel like we just need to get some of these things implemented and installed as far as staff trainings, some of the data sheets, some of the processes so that we can more clearly identify a specific need to make sure that those things are successful moving forward.
So sooner than later, we like our little budget list. We want some of those things on that budget list.
Yeah.
So that's, we've really been striving hard and that's why we started out tonight with the whole thing about we don't want those seniors and that to come up.
And even, even if you're not sure right now because you don't have all the data, but if you have a feeling that you're going to need X, Y, or Z, it's better to put it on there and then not need it.
Well, here's one thing that I will just say out loud, because this has been my experience over the last few years, being a continuous improvement school, there's been a function of the budget that has had to come back to Cold Spring Elementary for professional development. I've been able to do some amazing things over the last two years as far as getting staff trained, doing some internal work, some visioning work, some structural work to, to really attend to all of these needs that are out there. And really what I'm doing is buying time. I'm buying time so that we can actually work on the problem that we all know is in front of us, but we just don't have time to potentially work on. So I would just maybe put a bug in your ear that, and I especially feel bad when I look at my colleagues here, what is your staff development budgets? Like $1,200?
That's a roll.
Yeah, you can't, you can't do anything with that. You really can't do what you need to do.
Pre-heated one day workshop that sucks.
You really can't do what you need to do to get better at our job with $1,200 for the year for professional development. You can't. So I, I mean, that's something to maybe think outside of the box with. I know that we have a particular allocation and we're always talking about staff members and materials and technology and all these other things. I would just maybe advocate that you take another look at maybe supplementing a professional development budget so that you can actually get some of these things done that you need to get done.
So what, but what you're saying is that in reverse is going to help us with our problem? Because that's what we want to get to. So if that's what you're saying, you know, which.
I think so.
I mean, basically that's what I hear you say is that if we had more staff development money, we could train our people, we could get to where we needed to be. And I, I'm not saying I disagree with that, but I just wanted you to make that very clear that that's what you're.
And where's your, is that here?
A billion investment for people.
Right, no.
Where's your budget at? You said $1,200 and you can't do anything. So where's, how much do we have?
With the continuous improvement over the last few years, I've been at like $25,000. But, I mean, I.
But where does that go?
How long is that?
Well, it goes away at the end of this year.
Yeah, okay, because if we're just buying time for the last couple of years, which I understand and I, I get making that foundation stronger, but what's happening to our students when we're just buying time? I know the ones that are going to be served later are going to be even gaining more benefit, but my concern is the ones from last year, the ones from this year. And so that's really where it's hard processing, what, what are we doing now? And so I like the idea, if we could reach out to one of the universities and get somebody for a little bit to come in and work with our EL population, let's do it. Let's just, let's figure it out and let's do it so that we're not missing this group of students too, to avoid that, you know, the holding pattern in the middle school or whatever. So that's kind of where I'm at with it is let, let's, let's put it on the ground.
Yep. Yep, and I, and the flip side of that is, I don't want to give you the impression that we're doing nothing either.
And I don't, I don't, yeah, I didn't think that at all. I didn't think that, but.
Yeah.
Question, like, because it seems like, I don't know, is Steph involved in a lot of these conversations? I mean, because I don't, I mean, I mean. I mean, because I don't, I mean, I think there's still that early childhood piece that we don't want to lose, because there's a huge opportunity with growth in that group. And I don't know how much if at all, if she's having conversations with the principal group or not.
You didn't have to talk very much.
Yes, we're working on pre-K3 alignment. We meet once a month, if not more if needed, and then we work on planning that out and getting our staff trained accordingly. To back up even further, when I first came here, my staff was in year two, maybe somebody else knows better, of a new curriculum. And I found out very quickly when I asked them to report data that none of them were assessing in the same way, using the same test, but giving the test in a completely different way. So that in itself was a very big structural problem to me, that all of our students, even at the pre-K level, which is, you know, when you look at the state and the things that they mandate, and not totally on the board yet, it's still a problem that people are paying for our services and not getting the same kind of experience for their child. So we started at the very basic level of aligning our curriculum in a way where all the teachers have a working document that they are now moving at the same pace, or very close to the same pace, depending on how many days they see their kids, how often they see their kids, and for how long, through that curriculum. So they're all hitting the same learning targets throughout the year. So we have data from last year, but it probably is very useless. It kind of gives us an idea of where we're at, but because we were assessing so differently and teaching so differently, it's really kind of arbitrary. So this year, we're at a little bit more stable point, where our data will be much more useful, even though we have three out of four new teachers teaching our preschool classes, just because we have that working document, and the teacher can come in and say, okay, this is what we really need to focus on, this week, and use those learning targets across the board. So we're just actually putting our data together right now from our initial assessment. So we're a little bit further behind than where they are at the K5 level regarding data. And intervention services, professional development, that's kind of a whole nother feast of a conversation, just based off of the way we are funded. We do have support, we are getting some EL services, and we're working on that, and what that can look like and what that might mean. You know, there's just little things that we're working on when you have a staff of four or five that kind of cycles through a little bit. There's only so much you can change at one time. So we're really trying to nail kind of the basic, let's get our curriculum down, let's figure out what we're teaching, when we're teaching, let's make sure our teachers are getting together and have time to collaborate, because last year, their schedule was pretty crazy. If you could follow one of them around from morning to afternoon, they were running the whole time. This year, they have a middle-of-the-day common prep time where they do often talk about what they're teaching, and they're working together a lot more than they have been in the past. So we're solidifying ourselves.
I think it takes some time and some patience to see that incremental longitudinal growth too. We're talking about a lot of different initiatives and organizational interventions tonight. And one of the lessons that I've learned over the last 10 years is to have some patience and some medial vision that is out, that you're working towards over time, because time is hard, and our staff gets overwhelmed when we ask them to do too many things. So we really need to make sure that all of our arrows are pointed in the same direction, that we are patient, that we are taking the time. I think that was just my talk the other day with even is, as we take a look at doing these interventions differently and training the staff, making sure that we are systematic and thoughtful about how we see this change coming over the next year. And I'm talking specifically right now about these data sheets and the precedent interventions, and how we're doing some of those changes with the RTI cuts boards. It all is interrelated, but we have to be very thoughtful and systematic about making sure that our staff understands what we're asking them to do, that they've had the training to do what we've asked them to do, that they have the support to do what we're asking them to do, so that we are, in the end, successful with this organizational change. You know, and I'm in a position now where, again, this is my 10th year in the district, and I really want to see some of these things stick as an organizational change in the way that we look at data, the way that we approach EL learners. And we have to be systematic and thoughtful as we move over time to make sure that we are successful. If we move too fast, that's when we start losing people. And I've seen it happen a few times here where we've moved too fast. The understanding wasn't there, the volume wasn't there, and now we have to push reset that in three years.
Okay, well, thank you guys for everything. It's a long, I mean, this was a good, necessary conversation, but it's gotten late. So I don't know if anybody has any other quick follow-up comments or questions, or...
Come see us. Set up a time where you want to come and walk through our classrooms and our buildings and see what, see what we're doing. You know, put something behind you, I told you, so you can see it in action. We'd love to have you, it's like so.
Put on your t-shirt, we're gonna move fast.
May have to chase a child or two.
I do have one question with that. Is that something we could set up potentially a walkthrough, like we had done in the past?
Yeah, do a run.
Or a run. But, you know, instead of just a random, you know, to make best use of your time and our time, is that something that we can talk about?
Please, this is referring to is we set up a few years ago a specific page for a floor block through to go through different buildings and what our teacher events have become aligned as strategies called instructional program.
I always just got so anxious about those, because I felt like every classroom would go into, the teachers would just be like, so anxious.
But they knew to expect it, they knew we were coming, rather than us just showing up. I really thought they were really beneficial, eye-opening in how things have changed, and getting to see things in action for just a couple of moments, and then we were gone. You know, we had a couple of checklists that we would do, we would win in groups, I don't know, two or three.
Three.
I think I walked through last spring. I've just gotten to... But could we get to do it again? Have we got any people?
I could maybe even advocate for leaving the clipboard and checklist behind. I think that's what makes people nervous. You know, if you want to come through and walk through with us, we can probably point out some of the things that we're talking about here and just show you in context what that looks like in, in some of the classrooms.
That's a great group.
Well, we could have an electronic version too, as opposed to an actual piece of paper. To me, it would be easy enough just to know what we're looking for and then...
It's, I know, I don't do that, like, I don't want to do it, I just, I'd love to do it. It's just hard to be away from work for that, as well as contract negotiations with...
It's a different for you wherever you can.
Yep, it's not mandatory, if you can't do it, can't do it.
The only I would ask is how it's getting is good, but if you think it's better to maybe not, maybe you know, they don't know, because I know some teachers might get nervous just even knowing that we're coming. I'd rather see them in their true light, where they're, where they're not feeling anxious about it. So I would leave that up to you guys that, you know...
They're pretty good, I mean, I think we're all in their classrooms a lot.
But I mean, you know, again, I don't want them to change something, or, you know, feel like they have to. I just like to see them the way that, you know, the way it's...
Well, Kurt, I... That's my husband's name. Scott, Scott and I will... I'm sorry, Scott.
Too much stuff.
We'll talk about this at our next meeting, and we'll figure out, we'll work on some of that. It's, I don't know, I'm being a tired today, but we'll, we'll figure out some details and structure on that, and I'll probably get back at it in a little bit, so. But I think that this has been a great conversation, and I really appreciate. I, what I love about what's happening in this room is I feel like it's a tough conversation. There's high stakes, and I felt like the conversation looked really well. It was heated, it was very professional, and, you know, if you didn't have the answer, you know, or if you did, it was, it was just well thought out, and I just, this conversation has heated my expectations. I hope it did for everybody else, so, thank you.
We still have other chapters.
Do, do, Eric, so...
Sorry.
They have so much to do, it isn't, so I was hoping...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Oh, Eric.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I think you have to stay a few years.
Yeah, I'm grabbing some other stuff.
But Karen, you like, you're so hot.
I can't imagine.
So Eric, you don't, I don't...
You've got it covered so much.
You've covered...
Yeah, I'll go a lot of that. This'll just give you a chance to see some of the specific work and things that we're doing. So it can use the context.
So I'm gonna... Five minutes, five minutes for questions.
Does that mean you don't want to see my PowerPoint?
How long is your PowerPoint?
Fast, I can go really fast.
I mean, the only I would say is, as long as you don't think we're loose, I'm gonna be fast.
No, it's, it's gonna get me pretty fast. Because I made a really nice-looking PowerPoint. I'm proud of it. Well, I feel kind of warmed up, so I don't, I don't feel like I need to do the first few slides, but, you know, it is always nice to talk with you guys. I honestly feel like if you gave me the chance, that I could talk to you for two and a half hours about everything that's happening at Coltspring Elementary. And partially, that's because I really love our school, and I love our staff, and I love the things that we have going on there. And I'm just incredibly, incredibly proud of the work that the staff at Coltspring does. I don't know, it's... It's a deal. It's gonna be shorter than I thought. You know? Is it on the right source here? Or we can go back to yours? I have it up here.
Can you turn your computer around and just show us? Or is that not, is that what?
No. I'll just keep talking, it's kind of filling me. Like I said, I could talk for hours, and I think I do with some people, and I don't know. You know, that passion comes through, we talked about Mr. Jensen earlier, I have a passion about it, and I certainly have a passion about Coltspring Elementary. Just a personal update, my professional focus for the year has been around these items. Number one is technology, really using Office 365 as a strong communication tool in both communicating to my staff and then also organizing some of our committee work. Number two, around communication, a better job of using some electronic formats of some newsletters for both staff and students, or staff and families, and then using 365. About relationships, I think a little bit is what you witnessed here. Working really hard to find, and it's pretty easy actually to find a group with my principal colleagues about building those legal relationships. So both with them and my own staff members, district office, really working on fostering those relationships. Around my own instructional coaching, you heard me talk earlier about some pieces that I do in January, February, technically non-specific program and strategies. Title one is new for me this year, so getting to understand the federal programs and the parameters on that and how to best leverage it. And then also, mess about the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. I continue to be the president-elect of the Statewide Association. I'll be taking over as president in two years, but really leveraging that for my own gain here back in the board. There's an incredible amount of resources in professional development that helps me be a better principal here at Coltspring Elementary. And then personal focus, just trying to focus on family health and wellness. It could be an overwhelming job, and I got five little kids at home, and they all need me at some point.
Can you run through the presentation, and then once he gets it?
Yep, so... Yeah, I'm doing it right here.
You're so, you're so flawless that I just thought you were talking.
Yeah. I'm at a point where I have a visual for you to see about our student demographics. So 70% of our students fall in that white category, 20% of them are Hispanic. If you go by special population, we're actually looking at 11% English, 13% special education, 30% free and reduced lunch, and 2.5% homeless actually fall into that category of homeless. It may not be the visual that you have with homeless, but it really means that they're living in a home that's not theirs, that at any time they could be evicted and asked to leave, so they don't have their own space. That's an alarming stat for me, and that's, comes through our new K-vento reporting system. But out of those 478 students, that's what makes up Coltspring Elementary. All I get. Staffing profile, I'm gonna skip some of that, because I don't think we need to. It's actually none of these, even I can't show you the graphics I have. I think one thing that's important to note is that 14% of my teaching staff has been there less, is less than three years' experience. So we have a young staff at Coltspring Elementary. We have 30, roughly 30% is from that three to 10 years of experience, and then about 56% is more than 10 years. So when you compare that to other buildings, that's, that's actually a fairly young staff. And I think all the turnover from retirements and things in the past last years has really shown that we do have younger staff. So that takes a different approach. I think we were talking earlier about how do you support your staff members in their learning, getting them up a speed. Okay, now here's my next one with academic trends, we were talking about that earlier too. What we're seeing in academic trends with reading, we're, again, we are below state average. We do a five Y on that. That comes down to the fact that we have 0% of our EL students passing as a big part of it. It's not the only part of it. I think that we need some different approaches with our updated curriculum and having the right tools and strategies in place for staff members to go forward. We're seeing a slight uptick, so it's coming up, and I think that's some of the work we've done, time on text.
Eric, is that for our incoming, like, for Wonder Curriculum or the Curriculum?
Wonders will be coming next year, yep. If I can turn it, I don't know if that really helps. No, I can't see it. I'm gonna come around. Can you guys see that, a little bit?
A little bit.
A little bit. I don't know which is that clear. Okay, so that was trends in reading. Math, we're actually above the state average, and you can see that we've been bouncing up and down, and that's that cohort effect as different groups come in and out. But again, as a trend line, fairly stable, so we're excited to see what that can improve for math curriculum at the elementary. I've been having quite a few chances to sit down in the math lessons. It's pretty amazing, a, how many do you have? Kara would have a lot of those students, bringing kids. The stuff that they're talking about at the elementary with their math vocabulary is really quite incredible. And I'm really excited to see what's gonna happen with this over the course of a couple of years. Oh, yes.
It just isn't there.
Keep going. Goals and planning. So we talked early about the world's next workforce goals, and these are the goals that we did choose, just cause we know that we need to move. Percentage of all students three through five, fifty-four to sixty-five, that's roughly a, you know, that's roughly a ten-point jump. And looking at our cohorts coming in, I think that we have a shot at that, and also some of the different intervention pieces that we put in place with the targeted interventions. I would think that that is a realistic one. Also for math, we're looking to go from sixty to sixty-eight, again, looking at some of those different cohorts.
So that is your goals for next year?
For next year, that's what we're hoping to hit. And again, just my caveat, and my staff knows that I talk about this, choosing that goal is one thing, but doing the work for the different inputs to get that goal is another, that's a whole nother step. If we choose that number without any change strategies, then we're gonna get the same results. So one other piece that we do to be ready for those and make those decisions is doing certified comprehensive needs assessment, and then also a data day. We usually do that in the spring of seventeen, or in the springtime. It's a building description and needs for the seventeen, eighteen school year based on the following data. So we look at five different types of data, and this is something that we learned through the regional centers of excellence, to not just rely on your academic data, and it's been really useful over the past three years. So we look at academic data, non-academic data, perceptual data, fidelity data, program data. What we pulled out of our comprehensive needs assessment is a need to look at curriculum, a need to implement some new strategies, and then also family engagement. That was a function of the building RTI team in the spring, to look at those five types of data, and then using the five Y protocol. Basically, if you haven't heard of a five Y protocol, imagine having a conversation with a five-year-old that at the end of anything you say, they just go, "Why? Why? Why?" And you keep asking why until you get to a point where you can actually control something. And you do that around different data sets, and in the end, you come up with your training or change strategy. The comprehensive needs assessment, that's an assessment tool, the whole building takes it, it's a survey, it's a perceptual survey, looking at things like stakeholder buying, delivery of curriculum, administration of programs, resource allocation, and fidelity of programming, so we have a lot of information about Cold Spring Elementary. This is something that we call the RTI assessment matrix, we use this at Cold Spring Elementary to balance out our five different types of data. You can see there, this is how we track it. So on the side is the assessment, the data type, appreciating grades, who's collecting it, who's entering the data, when are we looking at it, when are we reporting on it, and then also our targets. One of the things that I've found over the past few years is if you don't have a clear target, people don't know what to hit. So as a building RTI team, we actually take a look at and communicate to the whole building, here are the assessments we're looking at this year, here is our target of acceptable level of performance, this is what we're trying to get to. If I didn't say it earlier, ask questions at any time.
Okay, what we, what we're hearing from the high school and middle school, they talked about, when they're looking at the data, they're breaking it down to every individual student, so you know what every individual student needs to do that year to make the change.
Yep.
Does that happen in your building?
Yes, so it doesn't happen at building RTI, but because of the structure of elementary, in that you have one teacher who owns that class, what happens is that conversation happens between intervention staff and general ed teachers or that grade level. So where Mark can't do that, cause kids would, or teachers would see multiple sections, you know, every day, you know, they would have a hundred and forty, however many students a day, they have to do that at the building RTI level. What we get to do it is at grade level meetings and six-week intervention checks with our intervention staff, so they have those collaborative meetings where they're looking at the data set. Now, one of the pieces that we're putting in place is a little bit what you heard earlier from Sammy, Mary, myself, about a new set of protocols of how to organize the data that will surface those students that need particular interventions faster. So that's one of the exciting pieces that we're putting in place.
So those meetings are happening every six weeks?
At Cold Spring Elementary, they are, because that's one of the change strategies that we put in place. I can't speak for sure for Rockwell Richmond, I think they are, but you would have to ask Sammy Mary.
Okay, so are all the staff lying into this, or do you have some staff that are saying, no, that's not how I've been teaching, I don't wanna do it better?
Which rectangular piece?
The whole idea that they're responsible for, okay, they've got twenty-five kids, and they're, you're giving them the data.
Yeah.
They need to understand that data, and they need to know where each child needs to get to by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think there's a continuum. I smirk a little bit, cause I'm seeing the continuum of faces right now. I think that comes back to the installation pieces of making sure that the training is there, that the forms are clear, that they also are offered support through our district coaches, and really making sure that they understand the why behind why we're doing it. You know, we've, some of our staff members have been here a long time and seen a lot of different approaches. And I will tell you, even in my ten years here, it looks different than ten years ago, of what we need to do in the classroom to be responsive to an ever-changing demographic of students that is coming to us, ones that have less attention, ones that read less at home, ones that play outside less. All those things have changed the student that we have in the elementary. We have a deteriorating family structures at home, all those things play a different, so we have to be different and responsive with how we're doing school now. Part of that is being able to look at all of these different types of data to understand the students and the student needs that we have. For example, if you look at line twenty-two, it's our, twenty-three is a student wellness inventory, we just finished that. I know for Cold Spring Elementary students, I know that seventy-five percent of them are connected to an activity outside of school. I know that roughly ninety-five percent of them feel like they have a best friend at school. So those are just a couple of the questions that we ask all of our student populations, that we understand more about how to meet their needs of social emotional well-being, because we know that if those aren't being met, we know that we don't have a chance with the academic piece. One of the other pieces that I developed this year, and this is not a real one, but this is what it looks like, so a grade level progress report. So based on these assessments that you have, that we just looked at, part of my job is to have conversations with grade levels that facilitate a conversation about did you or did you not meet the targets that we said for trimester one, for trimester two, trimester three. So this is just a grade level progress report, so that I can have a document, so when I go talk to, you know, this one would say fifth grade, I can talk them about the assessments that we said we're gonna collect in the fall, and here's your current status, and we've worked towards the end of your expectations. So it's a way to facilitate a conversation.
So, and what's the process if they're not meeting, they're not at where they're supposed to be at the end of the first trimester, how do you work with those staff members that haven't gotten their kids there, and make sure that that class doesn't get behind?
Well, that's where we start talking about some of our change strategies that we have in place, and how much, you know, for instance, one of them is cafe and conferring. How many times a week are you meeting with your most struggling students? What interventions are you using? So you can have those specific conversations once you have this in front of you, cause I will tell you, without having something like this in front of you, the urgency for staff members to change is not as great, cause they, they need to see something that tells them, ooh, this isn't working, before I find the urgency to make those changes. So it's, it's a matter of, and each one is different, I mean, it really, you start asking those why questions again, you know, how much are you spending, you know, making crafts? You know, that's a very simplistic way, but, you know, if you're starting to say that we spend all of our, our time, you know, doing holiday projects and not doing our reading core, you know, that's a conversation that we need to have about how we're using our time for students in our core classrooms.
So at the end of the first trimester, what percentage of your teachers were meeting their goals?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me, again, it's end of the year expectations, so we're moving towards it.
Many were moving towards it based on what you saw at the end of the first trimester?
We have some work to do with our reading, and that would show in our math, or our, excuse me, our, our MCA scores from last year, we know that we underperform in reading. Some of the other pieces, as they look through the individual student data, again, we're looking at those students that need some EL strategies in the classroom. On February fifth and ninth, we're actually engaging with our EL staff to do some work around reading can-do statements, which is the first level of change in the core classroom to be meeting students where they're at, and their language level in the classroom. So those are some of the change strategies that come from looking at data like this. This is just something that I talk about a lot as we start choosing the change strategies. Curriculum is the vehicle. The three circles that I talk about with my staff a lot are content, standards, and strategies, and we have to be competent in all three of those to have an impact in the classroom. Content, I need to understand what it is to be a reading teacher, I need to understand the taxonomy of it, I need to understand which pieces come first, what pieces come later. Standards, that's Minnesota state standards, that's to what level, and then also the strategies, what are the actual strategies I'm writing to the classroom to make sure that they're being delivered in a fun and engaging way, so that students pay attention. So that just frames a little bit of the conversation moving forward on some of the things that we've changed with our call to action. One of the things that I started doing is just, and this is not the exhaustive list, but just so you can see the example, I was really curious to start tracking when we put certain pieces in place. Sometimes that question comes up, you know, when did you start talking about top twenty? Or when did you start talking about Orton Gillingham? And then tracking that over the four implementation stages. So it's just a piece that I track, just from my own knowledge of when pieces went into place. Some of the change strategies that we've based on, time on text with support, that comes down to daily five. This year, we're, on January thirtieth, we're doing an internal training, using two staff members that have worked on this through their personal growth plan, and also through coupon PLC. Close reading. Oral vocabulary usage and development, we're focusing on math talk through our expressions curriculum, and then also reading can-do training, that's happening on the fifth and the eighth of February. We're working on conferring and cafe strategies, that's been my conference with staff members in the month of January. We're working on standards alignment and deconstruction, especially with their English language arts, we've got some times that reside in March and April, again, coming back to professional development where we're buying time, so grade levels can come together and actually work on the deconstruction of the standards. And then also Orton Gillingham for K two, that was a content and strategy approach that happened in October of seventeen. That was teacher changes, I'm not gonna talk a ton about these, but over the last four years, these are the books that we've read together to be prepared for that, and to understand the content behind how to deliver, and then also some of the why behind some of the changes that we're doing.
What was your percentage of staff that read those with you?
Oh, good question, we did daily five and cafe probably five years ago, we brought in specific trainings, everybody got the no more independent reading without support, everybody got the book whisperer, and then I gave everybody reading in the wild for Christmas last year, it became kind of a nerdy gift. So, I mean, we include everybody when we do these, and... I didn't give them a chapter test, no.
No, I don't expect that, I'm just wondering what the engagement is.
I will tell you that the four...
These things sell them all, really, what I mean?
Yeah, the four on the outside have changed practices, so daily five and cafe, that's when I'm in the classroom, I can see when that's implemented, so I know that that's changed practices, that's a visual thing for me in the conversation.
You said five years ago, but on your chart, it doesn't show that a couple charts back, it didn't look like five years ago to me.
The daily five and the cafe are really program books, the other ones are content and conceptual books, so really talking about philosophy, so those aren't on the chart. I would say the no more independent reading without support and the book whisperer through conversations that are happening in the building and email exchanges, when people start talking about reading strategies, that's where I see the evidence of those coming up, in the deeper level of conversations that staff members are having around literacy. One of the things I think that has happened incredible over the last four or five years has been a change in literacy culture at Cold Spring Elementary. Kids reading, kids talking about books, kids loving books, I've got some hard numbers, I don't have them with me tonight, but on the amount of circulation that's happening out of the library that has skyrocketed, so we have ways to measure those pieces. Close reading strategy, if you don't know what it is, it's a comprehension strategy, that's a training that we have coming up on January thirtieth, two of my staff members are doing that. We're talking about the can-do descriptors, and then math talk for oral language development, my two EL teachers in the building are leading that training. We're talking about standards alignment and deconstruction, and again, press and Orton Gillingham, that was the fast version of that. Some of the organizational changes that we've done over the past few years, committee work and alignment in level one and level two committees at Cold Spring Elementary, attraction implementation, that's really just a structure to make sure we get our stuff done, and that it stays aligned. Again, collaboration time, we've moved on to the online one-note class forum to track that collaboration notes and progress. Parent involvement with our host parents, scheduling, one of the big changes that we did this year as a change strategy is making sure that there's some untouchable core time. I believe I've shared this story before, but one of the experiences I had last year is I was sitting in an observation, I watched a beautiful core lesson, and at the end of the core lesson, in comes three EL students, and I go, where were they? Why, why were they not here? Well, they were at their EL services, cause that's just, with, with not having enough EL teachers, they have to have their time, it has to come somewhere. So I had this kinda shock moment where I'm thinking, oh my gosh, no wonder they're not at the core, because they're not in the core. So we did some things with scheduling, in that I've blocked out some protected times where nobody leaves, everybody's in the core, that was a very clear expectation at the beginning of the year, so that's one of those small tweaks that I picked up by being out involved. I'll go a little bit faster here, just some of the committee work, I'm talking about level one and level two, level one's matched the district committees, RTI, staff development, SAT, and curriculum instruction. Level two are some more specific things at Cold Spring Elementary, the fund committee, Vanna groups, digital leadership, literacy task force, Spartan pride, health and safety. Underneath, you can see all the people that chair those, so if you take, you know, my thirty-some teachers, I've got roughly ten of them in those leadership positions at the building level, leading, leading meetings, gaining that leadership experience. That's just a visual of what it looks like to have all those meetings and to manage them. One of the processes that happens is those chairs will meet with me as a building principal and reset the agenda as we go forward. And again, it's interesting to get everything pointing in the same direction. Oh, gosh, you guys wanna go home? So I'm gonna give you a couple of documents, just pass them around. I referenced this book earlier, this is a book that I feel like has kinda saved my life, it's called Traction, a friend that was in business shared this with me, and it's really just a way to make sure that the work that we're doing sticks. It talks about six different components, vision, data, process, issues, people, and that's how you get traction. I don't know if this is gonna work, or if you can really do this. Just to run you through the quick process, basically, we had a visioning process, and I can say this out loud, cause it might be a question that you have, the first thing that we started was with this document behind us, so this is not outside of the work that we have here at the board level, but it allows for the context around Cold Spring Elementary and the specific belief systems, and we just wanted to make sure that we identified that. Yeah, that's not working, I think, maybe it didn't work. We have a vision video that we put together, and I will send you guys the link so you can see it, but we're kinda proud of it, it just, it takes kind of the work that we did that day as a leadership team, and the leadership team is all of those chairs that you saw earlier, so it's ten people in all of those committees. If you look at the document in front of you, I'm just gonna run you through it quick. The Cliff Notes version of this is to really know who you are, what you believe in, what your strengths are, think about what you want to have happen ten years out from now, like what's your ideal vision ten years out, and then you work that backwards from ten years to three years to one year, and what you're gonna see on the subsequent pages is the one-year goal for each of those committees. And then the most impressive part to me is what's called the ninety-day rocks, which is our trimester goals. So those are all the things that we're tracking out throughout the year. So those are all the things that we're tracking update throughout the year to make sure that they're happening. Coming back to a global conversation about that, this is all about student experience, academics, high-quality teachers, all of these committees working together to make sure that we're getting an outcome that we want. The second document just gives you a little bit more detail on, and all of them together. Our process that we put together, it's really about connecting with community adults and activities, fostering growth, both social, emotional, intellectual, so we can have healthy kids at the back end. That was a really quick version. Any questions on that? Okay. Again, using collaboration, using OneNote class, same as the high school, to manage the online collaboration and the reporting. Working closely with our host parents, providing experience that connects students to, students, students to school, and parents to school. Scheduling, that was a little bit of the talk I talked about earlier, just making sure that all of our kids are in their core classes. And then intervention approaches, we've talked a lot about that tonight, but making sure that we've shifted over to a targeted intervention approach, using specific programs to track.